I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Wednesday, October 16th at 6:30 PM. Georgiana, can I have a roll call, please?
Director Fletcher.
Here.
Director Hutt.
Here.
And Michael.
Here.
Director Dallas.
Here.
Here. Thank you, Georgiana. I see we have a lot of people here tonight. I figure you're all here for one issue, so what we'll try to do is get through our basic stuff here real quick, and then we're going to try to move you guys up in the agenda, so.
We can do them right after chat.
Well, bear with us. I'm going to get to you as quick as I can. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Do I have anybody that wants anything discussed or removed?
Just discussed, nothing removed.
What item do you have?
I've got a mark in here.
Was it A, B, C, or D?
No, it's charts and stuff. Regular staff report and billing report is what's...it's in there. So it's C, I guess. If you want, or B, we could put it off until after the...
No, go ahead.
iPad page.
Okay. Kevin, what iPad page, and then you can move to it.
iPad page 23. This shows how much pipeline we've installed this year, and I just wanted to bring it to attention that we're...we've only installed 90 feet, and it's the least amount since I've been on the board. It's not...the year isn't over yet, the fiscal year. And then on the X page over, on 24, iPad 24, down at Recreation, it says, "Lake Activity, Saturday, October 19th, Lake Adventure Relay Event." You know what...does the Lake Committee know exactly what that is?
I was kind of surprised by it, too.
Oh, okay.
It's not a PID sponsored event. It's a local organization. This is the third year, I've talked about it in past years, that they do a triathlon, and they pay the fee for the event, and it's held there, and it's just FYI for you guys.
No swimming?
No swimming.
Swimming on the event?
Part of the triathlon's kayaking, I believe.
And then on page 29, it shows water consumption compared to last year and this year, and we're...now we're consuming less water than last year. Sort of surprised, because we're both...last year and this year are sort of dry, to see the water consumption go down. Then on page 31, iPad, it shows the use of the PID permit comparison. I want to comment one thing. At the Park and Recs District, somebody gave Park and Rec the credit for a few minutes there, that are our beautiful lake and everything, and then Mike was kind enough to tell you that it belonged to Paradise Irrigation District. So, we appreciate the comments and the things. Actually, our uses keep growing, and this chart shows that we're increasing use again this year, over the previous year. And, let's see, 33. What did I mark? It's actually 34 is what I wanted to make comment. We've sold 202 acre feet to Paradise Pines and Megalia of water this year. Is that an increase over last year, George, or...
Yes, because they got their Lime Saddle Pipeline installed, and that's not our water. That's not our water, that's their water. So rather than transferring it to Lime Saddle, they are requiring it...or asking for it to be delivered to the pines. That's the Sterling Bluffs water.
Oh, okay. We treat it, too, don't we?
They pass to treat it and deliver it.
So we do cooperate with other close-in irrigation districts. And, that's it.
Is that...that water from the Sterling Bluffs, does that come down the Hendricks canal?
Yes.
Where do they dump it in, so we can pick it up and treat it?
Yeah, they dump it out of the Hendricks, and it flows into Paradise Lake.
Through Little Blue Creek?
Yes.
Does it run it through the firehouse first, or do you know? It doesn't make any difference to us what you do with it?
I had a question. Last time I requested something about how the meters were helping our customers, I didn't...it didn't get in there yet, did it?
We haven't got to that yet.
Are you going to do it?
We're working on it.
Oh, okay, good. I didn't know whether you decided not to, or whether...or whether you were going to, and maybe I couldn't find it.
We're working on it, good for him.
Good.
Detail analysis for you, Larry.
Good.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not on the scheduled agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for the public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. And I will ask and remind everybody...is there anybody that had anything that was not on the agenda tonight that they wanted to? Lauren?
I'd just like to ask the council to...the board to speak a little more into their microphone, there's so many people here, it's a little hard to understand some of them.
Probably turn volumes up.
Thank you.
If that's possible. So, I know that a lot of you are here for one item, and I'm going to ask that we keep this respectful and orderly. We're more than willing to hear all of you that want to speak, but I will insist that it remains orderly. So, with that in mind, we'll be getting up to that in just a few minutes. Committee reports and presentations. Presentation from PID Investment Advisor Dan Bay, from Bay Kledakis and Associates.
Do you want to move that?
Do you want to move it?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just move that off. We're going to move number four.
Catch Dan's thunder.
We're just going to take number four, and we're just going to move it out. We're going to move General Manager's Report out, Legal Report out, and we are going to get to seven, Old Business, which is what I believe everybody's here for. Item A, Paradise Recreation and Park District Property Off Nunley Road, review and consider request for reconsideration submitted by Joseph W. Baggett relating to action taken by PID Board of Directors at the regular meeting of September 18th.
How do you get this out?
Joe, would you like to get up to the podium if you'd like to, and...
I'll get over here.
George, did you want to say something?
Joe, you go first, it was his letter.
And then I can...yeah. But it went...I thought I had it, but then it squished this, and when I went to it on the...
All members of the board, my name is Joe Baggett. I come here as concerned citizen. I live at 5810 Oak Creek Drive in the neighborhood of Oak Creek Park. When I come here today, and all my friends and neighbors are here, too, also, is to let you know how important that park is to us, and how much we do not want it sold. We had a hearing at the Rec and Parks Department last week, and the Rexon Park Department has decided to table the whole issue. They did not declare it surplus property, they did not authorize coming to your board to discuss the deed, and they did not authorize sale. Those were the matters of the notice they had for their...their meeting of last week. I've submitted a little letter to you all, it's one of the attachments to it. So, I think inadvertently, this board took some action last...at your last meeting, September 18th, which would set some wheels turning as far as revamping the deed language, so that the property could be sold outside of the public realm, maybe, but sold in one way or another. That property's been owned for 105 years by the public, since 1908 by your district, and in 1974, you deeded it over to Rexon Park. With that reversionary deed, that if the Parks and Rec wanted to either not use it as a park, or sell it, that it came back to you. While there's been overwhelming public support to Rec and Park Department last week, that we want it to remain a park, the board seemed very impressed and well aware of that, and has sent that to committee with Rexon Park as far as how to best serve the public as a park, or a nature preserve, according to their...their own 10-year master plan. Anyhow, what I'm asking you to reconsider is that any action you took last week, it would have been...last month, that would have been item 8G of your last month's agenda. And ask that because of lack of meaningful public notice, and lack of authority from the Parks and Rec Board for that action, and the fact that that wasn't later ratified by the board, in fact, the opposite, that we ask please that you reverse and set aside any action you took on that matter, and certainly table it for whatever comes in the future. And we're asking, please, that this being 105-year-old public land, that if anything comes before your board, before yourselves, altering in any way, or even anything to do with how that land is held, that you post it at the entrance of the park at Oak Creek Drive, as later the Rexon Park Department did, and that led to a great deal of public interest. And that would be the same with this board, as you can see here tonight. So that's what we ask, and with that, I ask you if you could please take a look at the little letter I submitted, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Was there any comments from the public? Is there somebody else from the public?
Do you want me to jump in and give you...
Yeah, George, yeah, it...yeah. Let's let George kind of explain to you folks what's kind of in the process right here.
This came before this board last month. It was simply providing PRPD an option in their evaluation of what to do. We're not in the park business, it's not what we do. So, we were only giving them another option as they were evaluating that piece of property. So, they know where this board stands, they know what your feelings were at that point. So, I would say the simplest way to deal with this is reverse your decision and just...if the park wants to proceed with the sale, and they know where you stand, and they know that they need your permission to do that, so there's no reason to let last month's decision stand. It's not...we're not in the park business, we'll let them figure out how to deal with that and move on. I wouldn't commit, contrary to your request, making any notice, any more than we're required to by law, just because there's an opportunity to stumble on that, and I wouldn't want to disappoint somebody, so that's my input.
So the effect of your action last month was to present an offer to PRPD, and by not acting...that board not acting on that offer, it could be rescinded freely. You know, I understand that the folks in the room here are concerned. When a public agency acts, there's a lot of safeguards in place, and one of which is public notice of meetings. So, while we can't specifically commit to give you a posted notice on your street, we are legally obligated to give you public notice of every meeting we have. So, you can request copies be delivered to your home address, or business address, whatever the case may be.
Or email.
Email. You could...you're also welcome to check the district's website. The agenda packets are posted at that location. So, meeting notices are one avenue. Another avenue is the sequel process. Anytime you propose to sell property for a purpose that possibly is different from what it's historically been used for, there is an environmental review process that involves public comment, so that's another opportunity. But, but back to what the board can do tonight, you can rescind your prior action. It doesn't really tie the parks' hands at all. If they want to reconsider this issue, they can do so at a meeting that they have, and then they can come to this board with another proposal, whatever that may be.
So, could we...could we not also just leave it as is? We've told them that we've...we give them the approval, that we would be willing to let them have the property with no strings attached, and whether they act upon that or not is up to them.
Yeah, at some point, the legal effect of an offer is after a reasonable point...period of time, if it's not accepted, it's deemed rejected. So, it's not like our offer will just be hanging out there indefinitely. At some point, if PRPD does not act on it, it will be effectively rejected.
They table the issue indefinitely, then...
But they haven't tabled it indefinitely yet.
Well, we don't know.
No. They haven't tabled it? I thought they formed a committee or something.
They tabled it indefinitely, sent it to committee for further study.
Yeah, well, yeah, to me, that's not tabling it. That's further study.
All I can say is expression they used was tabled it indefinitely.
Right. The thing is, is they can't...the only thing they can do with it as it stands now is as a park. So they can't do anything with it unless we give them their permission. And as you've heard, we don't want it back.
Well, according...according to what Joe said, they did not have board...and I'm going to say, their...Mike maybe did not have board approval when he came to us to ask, although I don't think...I think he was kind of in the right process of asking us if it was something that he could go to his board with. So, inadvertently, I don't think that anybody had ill feelings towards this piece of land, it was just that the way the chain of events occurred, it just didn't give you guys notice on there. But you see now that there's a lot of people that are concerned about this piece of property, and that's great. I've known that piece of property, I'm born and raised in Paradise, so we've all...
Now, we did get...last meeting, we got a letter from somebody that was against it, didn't we?
There was...there was one letter against it.
Somebody...somebody was out there paying attention.
There was also one letter that was complaining about the parking at the park entrance.
Right.
So, we had kind of an offset of one letter and one letter.
Yeah, so somebody was out there paying attention, which is good.
I really don't see a problem, at this point, rescinding what we did last month, and wait until the park moves forward. If they want to come back to us, then ample public notice can be given.
Mr. President? That's what...that's what I like to do. I think that's a very business-wise thing, and it descends a signal to the Park and Recs District Board. And I'd like to move that we rescind item...our action on item 8G on the PID Agenda of 9/18, for the action taken affecting Oak Creek Park.
Second. Is there anybody else that would like to have further discussion on it before we vote?
I would think, I know Mike Tricky real well, have a tremendous amount of respect for the person, think he's done an awesome job with our Rec Department. And he and the board, I know several of those people also, if they want to consider it any further, they really know where we stand, because we're not in the park business. The only business we're in, park-wise, is immediate around our lakes and the watershed. I think that's really what even Mike wanted to know. And the thing is, is I don't know if you realize it, but the Park District is hurting for money. They bet their fees are being increased, their income is being lowered, and so they're just looking for a way to get out of maintaining something that hardly anybody uses, and to me, it was just a way of getting money.
Apparently, there's quite a...I have a show of hands. I went and looked at it over the hill, as far as I wanted to go. Who walks around that park? That shows you there's a lot of people here.
Every day.
Every day. Once a month?
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
That's a beautiful canyon. I used to camp down from that, just a little ways, as a boy scout. That was before Pearson came down here. We had to walk up from Sturms.
You're dating yourself there.
That was...that was last year, if I remember correctly.
Well, if I...if I was the Rec District, I would be looking for a way to recoup the cost to maintain that place, from the people who use it. No, I think there is...what is the maintenance? How much is the maintenance over there?
I was very...
I thought it was getting bigger and bigger. The fire department isn't bothering you?
Next week, we're spending $1,400 on it to have it surveyed, we'll spend probably another $500, we have a trespass we have to deal with, so, you know, it's a couple thousand dollars there that we're spending on it. We spent about only $2,000 or $3,000 when we did the brush clearing on it, and we had to do that fire break. Did about two years of spraying, not the canopy, they kept the weeds down, it was a little roundup, but very helpful part of the park, was it, you know?
Okay. So the maintenance doesn't bother you, then? Good, that was my concern.
Do you want any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I will. Like I said, we passed along a courtesy back to the PRPD, and they're the ones who make a decision as to whether they're going to take that property and turn it into a park, a real park, or whether they need to cut their losses and sell it, dispose of it. It makes no difference to us. One of the...one of the items that PRPD could do, they could abandon the property, revert the deed process back to Paradise Irrigation District, and I can guarantee you that if we get it back, it's just a surplus piece of land, we are not going to be developing a park into it, and we would then declare it as surplus property and dispose of it at the quickest manner that we could. Anyhow, that would be one of the actions we could take. So the fact that we have given them the authority to take an action, either moving ahead with their process or not, we're not the kingpin. We shouldn't be the one that you're soliciting to try and save your park. This is kind of like one of those things where you want to have us to be a roadblock for you, just as another measure to prevent them from changing it, and I don't think that's appropriate. That's their responsibility, it's not our responsibility. I would suggest we leave it as it is and not rescind the...the action, because then they will go ahead and probably, with all of the public support for the making this a park, it's kind of seems to me that it's going to be made into one that's more open, or I don't know what it is that you're all wanting, or just keep it the same way that it is.
It's not just the same.
But that's...that's certainly not our decision, and that's my comment to the board. Steph, you have a public member over here.
I'm sorry, sir. Yes?
Alan Rodriguez, City of 711 Hill. Now, I retired from Department of Corrections, and I ran the work crews, so all that area in there, they're talking about costs involved in maintaining the lake. Why can we not use inmate labor, as they do up at the lake, to keep that area clean, buried, bushed, and it doesn't cost us dime. We're already paying to house them, let's use them.
I think we...I think when we use them, we pay a small portion, but that is something directed for the parks, not for PID, because we're not in charge of taking care of the land. So, you want to relay those comments to the Park and Rec District, since they're the ones, but thank you for that comment.
Is this food for thought?
Yep. Well, we utilize those crews quite often during the course of a year in brush cleaning around the lake.
Yeah, Mr. Dowd's up there.
Yeah, so...
I think the...our board basically didn't want to get involved, and wanted the park people to take it in to theirs.
Well, I think we're involved, so I think...
Yeah, we are.
We're going to...is there any...Bill, did you have any comments?
Just a question.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Call for the question, okay. Let's see, the question is...okay. All in favor of rescinding last month's decision on September 18th? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against?
That would be me.
That's one.
Two.
Passes two. I'm sorry, Larry, I didn't see it, I thought you said aye.
Who passes?
Passes 3-2 on there. So I hope, folks, when the park makes a decision on what they want to do with it, when they come back from committee, that you will be noticed. That notice will not come from us, okay? Just so you know, doesn't matter what happens, that notice will not be coming from us. But if you want to look at our agenda, it is available online, or you can call the office, and they will send you a packet or an agenda, at least, so that you'll know what's going on in our meetings.
Well, we thank your time and listening to our comments.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate all of you showing up, I mean, that's great.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'm thinking of, I don't want any more liability to PID, I don't want to have to raise our water rates.
Good seeing you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
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 Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue with the meeting.
We're going to go back to item number four, which is committee reports and presentations. Presentation from PID Investment Advisor Dan Bay of Bay Kledakis and Associates. Misty, sorry if I'm hammering...if I'm hammering your last name, I'm sorry about that. Wow, how depressing, I thought everybody was here to listen to my exciting presentation on bonds and interest rates. Wow.
Right.
Ah, boy. Let's see here.
Dan, I don't want to break this to you straight out.
Yeah, you are.
They thought Misty was going to give the presentation, and they learned that she wasn't...
They left.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Thank you. Let's see here. Okay. So this evening will be very quick, very brief, just a discussion of...in regards to your investment account, and really discussion about interest rates, where we've been and where we think we're headed, and why it's important to your portfolio. So, first thing we'll take a look at is your portfolio. Currently, we have 12 holdings in the bond portfolio, which represent some municipal bonds and some corporate...corporate bonds. The...your average weighted coupon currently is about 3.76, which differs considerably from the current yield to maturity, which is about 1.3%. And the reason for that is, as you all know, interest rates are extremely low, and our average maturity is 1.6 years, and that's by design. First of all, there are rules in which we must follow, and secondary, the interest rates are subject to rising, interest rates are low, so we've kept the maturities extremely short, and really for quite some time, as...as bonds have matured in the portfolio and CDs have matured, we've actually rolled those right into a money market account. But currently, the...the income currently on this portfolio, which is...which represents about 1. million, 1.1 million, is about $34,000 a year. So, it's certainly not nothing, but historically, from a historical standpoint, rates are certainly low. However, currently, where we're rolling the money, we're rolling the monies into Rabo Bank, which is currently about a quarter of 1%. We also have 522,000 in brokerage CDs. Those brokerage CDs are held at...those are brokerage CDs held at Raymond James. The rate's 2.05%, and those CDs will be maturing in November 2015. So, again, as...if we were to go out today and look for CDs about the same maturity, we'd be about 1%, probably less. We would need to roll those out quite a bit, so, for really for the...for reasons of where interest rates are today, and where we anticipate they're going to be, and also cash needs, we've been rolling that money into Rabo Bank. Don't we have limitations on how far we can roll those? Don't we have limitations on how far we can roll those out? Yeah, the maximum, yes, yeah, yeah, exactly, Steph. Uh, actually, the maximum's five years. But today, in our current interest rate environment, we just really don't see enough reason to go out five years. There just isn't a big enough difference between really rolling it into cash and five-year, five-year rates. I think at some point in the future, as, as we see rates begin to rise, that may make a lot more sense. But today, that just, um- But cash was, cash would leave us freed up to move that at any point. That's exactly correct. Right. Market picks up. Yeah, that's exactly correct. Right.
Is the GE Capital Funds, is that short-term?
Went to sleep on this.
Yeah, you know, I actually have, you know, I actually, I have, um, I wanted to hide that from you. Actually, I can see it perfectly fine. GE Capital actually matures, um, December of 2014. We have two, two notes. We bought those, of course, at a premium. Uh, one of those, uh, has a coupon of 5.8, the other's 4.5. But again, um, there's a big difference between what, what the coupon and, uh, what the actual year, yield to maturity or yield to worst is. So.
They're what's called short-term paper?
Yeah. Well, actually, um, it, it, yeah, yes, that's right. Yeah. It, it's, you know, there's, uh, there's 60-day paper, 90-day paper, et cetera, but these are really capital notes, yeah. And they've actually, you know, we bought the, we bought those on the secondary, on the secondary market. Which is, which is exactly why the, the coupon rates are five, shows, oh, there we go. Has a 5.8%.
That's why the interest rates are so high on.
Yeah, exactly. Right. But again, we bought those, those at a premium, of course. Uh, you know, um, as an example, treasury yields today on a two-years, 0.33%. Five-years, 1.39, and the, the 10-year treasury, which of course, we wouldn't be allowed to purchase anyway, but just as a reference point, is, uh, 2.64%.
How old is the California State? Is that paper too?
Um, that's a municipal bond. Misty, would you- That's actually a municipal bond. About 2010. When did we buy that? Uh, the third one down's, uh, that's California State's, uh, comes due in April of 14. And I, I don't have that available at the moment when we- I think that was, that was already here when you joined us. That wasn't something that you- It, yeah, it probably, it probably was. We did buy some short-term, um, California paper at one time, a considerable amount. That's not one of them.
Yeah. Yeah, most of those on the top, uh, we purchased before Dan. Uh, I know Florida State Government, we did. Citibank, we did. California State, we did. Burlington, Vermont, we did. I don't, Berkshire Hathaway could have been.
We purchased that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the Hemet California, we purchased before Dan. Lucas County, Ohio, we did. Morgan Stanley-
We picked up Morgan Stanley. Uh, Wachovia was in. Wells Fargo was on, uh, already on the books.
So those are, those are pre-Dan, so I would say those are probably four to five years out that we had purchased those. As you remember, before, our portfolio was out of compliance. When Dan came on, we sold anything that was out of compliance, but some of the stuff was right in compliance, just when he took it over.
I, I remember because I looked at the Vermont thing up there and I thought, Jesus, that didn't compliance, but you're-
It is in compliance.
It is in compliance.
Yeah, yeah. But some of these we were bought, were probably, uh, 2010, '09, around there. Uh, interest rates were, were a lot higher during that time, too.
It's turned out to be good investments, that's for sure.
Right. Um, and so we're just kind of, as, as everything kind of matures, the five-year bonds that Dan's are looking at up there aren't worth taking on the risk that you're going, okay, what if interest rates rise and we're holding a five-year bond that's paying 2.5%? It's not giving us the warm and fuzzies. So that's why we continue to push it into cash. It gives us the availability of cash to, to put on, to pay for the projects that have already been approved. But also, it gives us that opportunity to kind of wait out the market. So when the market does start to turn, we can kind of ladder our investments into the market so that we're not taking such a heavy interest rate risk associated with those, uh, with those investments.
And that's why the short-term paper is in there.
That's why we have short-term. That's why we're, we're keeping a lot of our funds, we're, they're, they're not short-term, they're liquid. This is really our long-term investments. If you were to say, what's our long-term, what's our short-term, this is really our long-term investment account.
Five years is as long-term as we can do.
That's right. Exactly.
Five years is, is-
Our short-term investment account is liquid.
My definition. Right. And, and also, the board did make a decision maybe a year ago or so, um, by recollection, in regards to per, the purchase of, uh, adage state bonds. And I believe that the board decided to, uh, purchase California only, but we certainly have no reason to sell our existing portfolio. Did we not rescind that?
Yeah.
Oh, you did. Okay, there you go.
Cause after-
They, they had that for a year.
One of your reviews, we- Yes, okay. Decided there wasn't a whole lot here to choose from in the first place. Yeah, I guess I convinced you otherwise, didn't I? Yeah, okay.
You decided to give weight.
Yeah. So let's talk about, let's talk a bit about interest rate, uh, risk and, um, where we are in the current markets. So. All right. So this is the graph of, uh, of 10-year treasuries back from about 1960 through about where we are today, um, to 2013. And, um, back in 1981, we won't reminisce, uh, uh, very long on this, but, uh, the 10-year treasury was 12.57%. And, and so, um, you know, was that bad or good? Well, I can't say. It depends upon whether you were a borrower or investor. But nevertheless, uh, this is where we are, um, this is where we are today. Back down here, as I described, it's 2.64%, so it's considerable discount. So, um, why is it, uh, why is it prudent for the district, uh, not only because of, because of the policies we need to file, follow with? Why is it prudent not to invest in long, long, long-term, uh, notes of any kind? This, um, if you take a look at, uh, as an example, a, uh, years to maturity, 10 years out, it's the third one down 4%. So we, if we purchased it at the current price of, uh, of, you know, we'll call it par, 100, and the current yield to maturity is 4%, if rates were to rise, you would have, really based upon, um, based upon how high rates, you know, were to rise, you can see you could have a loss of 8% on a, uh, on a 10-year, um, 10-year, a 10-year treasury. If, uh, it depends upon how high rates were to rise. So here's another, another graph here. If, um, if we had a one basis point increase in interest rates, you'd see this where it shows 100 basis points right there. If we had a 10-year note, the second one down, you'd lose about 8% of the, of the value of the existing bond. If rates were to rise 200 basis points, which is really just 2%, you'd lose about 15% of your, uh, the value of the bond. And that's all fine and dandy, as long as you intend to hold the bond out that far. Um, really, then it's really a loss of the potential of earning, earning monies. But the fact is, is that you very well may need the money. And by policy, five years the max. You see, again, if interest rates were to rise 3, 300 basis points or 3%, you'd lose darn near 25% of your value. So again, uh, if you just, if we just go back up here and take a look at where rates have been, where they are today, again, 10-year treasury today's 2.64. The, uh, in 1981 is 12.57. Do we believe they're gonna get there again? Well, who knows? I doubt it. Probably, uh, uh, could be many, many years. But it could certainly be conceivable that we would have a 300 basis point, uh, increase in interest rates. Be very reasonable. Be back at about 5% on a 10-year treasury. And if that would occur, you'd have a significant loss of principal. And again, if you needed the money, you'd be selling at a loss. So we have by design and by policy, um, kept interest rates very short. And, and again, um, there just isn't a lot of opportunity out there in that five-year space anyway, which is the maximum at 1.39%. We just don't really see that there's, there's just a lot of reason to go out right now. So we've been rolling money into cash. So, you know, when do we think rates are gonna rise? Well, I guess it's anybody's guess, depends upon who you listen to, but the feds have been pretty darn clear. It looks like it's gonna be probably late 2014, 2015, before they even consider, uh, the rise in rates. Um, however, the market does move rates, just in the sense that, uh, people, um, are looking at the economy. They're gauging inflation. And so, you know, interest rates will move. The, uh, anyone in, Ken's in the mortgage business, you saw interest rates rise on those 30-year mortgages. Why? Because investors were not willing to place money out on a long-term investment at the current rate. They wanted something a little higher. And so whether the feds move rates or not, uh, bond rates will move. So, uh, so again, it just depends upon where the economy's headed and what's, what's taking place. So, uh, our recommendation is to remain on the exact same track that we've been in. That's primarily roll, roll monies into, uh, cash until we see a reason to do something different.
What's the current Rabo rate? Have you said we're rolling it into Rabo?
Yeah, it's a quarter, about a quarter 1%, 0.25.
How much money is in that for?
1. Do you have that number?
Yeah, uh, let's see. I, I might, I might very well have it on this other-
And the FDIC insurance sum is about half a million?
Yeah, it doesn't apply to that, Dustin, in the sense that, um, um, Rabo actually, actually is required, uh, to, to back those monies.
Collateralize?
Yes.
110%.
Right. A hundred, yeah, over 100%.
110%.
Yes.
They have to collateralize 110% of that.
So, so a little bit different than, um, so there's really two categories, but this particular category, yeah.
The other, the other place that we're putting money is just straight into our tri-county's checking account because there is earnings credits associated with that. And right now, our earnings credits are about 0.35% of, of it. So it basically offsets the fees that they charge for our account. And so that's actually earning more money as an earnings credit than it is as an interest rate credit. So we've been, we've been stocking up our checking account. Again, it has to be collateralized, 110% because it's a governmental account. So we've been kind of stocking money into that, into that, uh, general account also.
Just one other quick, uh, point in regards to the makeup of the bond portfolio. About 20, about 20% is in water and sewer, 20% is in education, 20% is in power, 20% is in industrial, and then about 16% is state and local. So again, it's pretty well diversified as well. So. Money man, questions so far?
I was wondering why you-
No, it's, it's very dim.
I'm sorry?
It's, no, I say it's v- very dim future as far as interest goes.
Agriculture's booming right now, land, and so especially in California. And there's some very profitable nut companies and other things right in the North Valley. Have you ever looked into investing in some of those private companies if they have stock?
Well, first of all, your portfolio doesn't allow the, the ownership of stock. Whether it be, you know, um, bond holdings, that could be a potential, but the company would be, need to be large enough to be rated by a credit rating agency. And, um, you know, primarily the paper that we're buying, you know, is, again, whether it's, if it's municipal bonds, um, you know, they're gonna be rated. If they're corporate, they're, um, you know, very large, uh, very large established companies. Berkshire Hathaway, um, you know-
No, I understand who's up there, but some of these small, we used to be considered small, are quite large.
They're not, they're not issuing corporate, a lot of them are not issuing corporate bonds. They are, they obviously have stock that they offer. We're not allowed to buy individual stocks as a, uh, investment, um, as an investment. We are allowed to buy corporate bonds. Corporate bonds, though, they have to have certain ratings, meaning strength of the company. But most of those ag companies are outgoing, getting federal, federal farm credit. And so they're not issuing bonds associated with, with debt or anything like that. If they're, if they're looking for, for loans or, or any type of things like that, they're normally getting it on the private market.
Fo, farm credit bonds are typically long-term bonds, by the way, uh, because typically, you know, those, uh, so.
The bank you're buying into at the 0.25?
Right.
Is owned by a group of cooperatives, farm cooperatives in, uh, I think it's Holland or Netherlands.
The Netherlands, that's correct. Yeah.
So it is actually owned by farmers there. And it's, you know, I-
We're allowed to have that account. We're not allowed to buy stock in a California- Yeah, right. California nut growers or, you know, uh- And, and again- Nettle nut, let's say, you know, or-
Could we even buy stock in a bank?
No, you would not buy stock. Would not buy stock. All we're doing is putting money in the bank.
Period.
We can't buy, we're just putting money in the bank. Yeah, that, that would be, that would be, that would be violating the policy.
We can't buy Google, we can't buy GM, we can't buy AT&amp;T.
There's actually a statute that sets the goals of your investment policy in order and priority. Number one is safety. Number two is liquidity. And the third, uh, goal is return on investment. So that's why there's very strict limits on what you can invest in.
And the liquidity relates to the five-year term.
Yeah, and, and there's a percentage limit as well.
Yeah.
So you gotta, you know, number one, it's gotta be safe, but number two, you gotta be able to get at it in the event you need it.
Short and high risk is not in our-
It's thanks to Orange County, I think, isn't it? Doesn't that do-
No, actually, this predates City of Bell.
Oh, no, no, I don't think so.
San Diego.
Orange County.
Orange County?
Jump on.
Yeah.
I thought it was San Diego. But, but I think we're meeting those goals. I think that we have very safe investments. We are very liquid within our needs. And we are doing our best to get the return that we possibly can under those first two, uh, scenarios. Uh, right now, LAIF, which most of their, uh, people, uh, in government is putting their money into, is 0.15% or 10 basis points lower than what Rabo's offering. We, we selected Rabo and Umpqua because they offer 10 basis points higher than LAIF. We feel that they're safe, they're, and the safe as LAIF, or safer is, in my personal opinion. But, and there is liquid, or more liquid than LAIF, Local Agency Investment Fund. And so, and, and it's a, it's, it's an indexed rate. They're taking that rate and adding 10 basis points to it. So from, from a liquid standpoint, we're actually getting more than most government agencies out there that are not out there shopping or doing their homework. So.
Do we have any money in LAIF?
We do. We have to keep some money in there. Um, so we have probably about 300,000 in LAIF. But that's part, one of them is required by our, uh, one of our bonds to keep money in there for a, uh, basically a reserve. But it doesn't earn much money.
I can tell you're super excited about it, too.
Yeah, yeah. So.
I think I can make 4 cents on my savings account last year.
Dan? Sorry, we kind of got off there. If you want to continue? Not at all. It's all pertinent. All right. That's, that's all I had. Okay. Was there anybody from the public that had any questions for Dan? Okay, we'll close that part of it. And any other director had any questions for Dan? I think we just kind of covered them just then, so.
I, I'll close, that we just continue to look for investments that, uh, will meet the district's need. Dan is always out there looking, informing, um, and, uh, if something does come up, he's right on there looking for it and seeing if we can get involved in it. Uh, right now, the market's bleak, but it doesn't mean that he's not, uh, constantly pounding, pounding the pavement. He's not sitting on the sidelines. He's, he's trying to get, get the best for the district. So as things come up, we continue to, to look at them. And, uh, if something pops into our, our bucket that looks like it's gonna work for us, we definitely will jump in feet first. So.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan. Thank you for coming up.
Yes, thank you, Dan.
Okay. Thanks for those nice comments.
Thank you, my pleasure.
We are gonna move on to Section 4B, which is Board Oral Reports Regarding the Representation of Commission's Committees. Butu, Lafco, or Butu Local Agency Formation Commission Director Duncan.
Okay, we met on October the 3rd. And, uh, we're still doing the City of Chico's Extension of Services. We did six more. And unfortunately, we reduced the rate that we charge them to encourage them to do it because they're in violation of state law. And we're losing money on it, unfortunately. Uh, and then we also found out that they have 60 to 80 other lots that are illegal, that were done without notifying us. So.
The city, okay?
The city of Chico. No, it's, no, it's a hookup. They're not in the city, but they're hooked up to the city sewer.
Mostly north of town.
Right. What's happened, if we, if Paradise ever gets ours hooked up to the, to Chico, we're gonna have to get permission from Lafco. And I understand Lafco will not allow any hookups to the, to that line when it's, we're not gonna allow any hookups to that line when it's going down Skyway, if they're not in our jurisdiction.
Thank you, folks.
And then we, uh, that was basically all we did. The, uh, we do have, we're on round three of getting a special district's non-enterprise regular commissioner and a special district's commissioner. And we need one more, one more special districts to vote. We're one short to get a quorum. We're one short to get a quorum. And that, and, uh, base, and that's it, that was all we did.
Okay, thank you, Director Duncan. Item, uh, four B, part two, Butte County Special District Association, Director Hunt.
We met shortly after Larry and met with, uh, LAFCO.
Before.
Was it the very next day?
No, it was before.
We met just before it?
October first. Yeah, we meet, we're supposed to meet just before LAFCO.
I thought it was just right after.
Nope.
Anyhow, we had very little business to conduct, as you see on the agenda tonight. One of the items that we talked about was the nomination for Butte County Special District Executive Board. One of the items that was discussed that was that we don't treat it frivolously, and that we nominate people that we've already contacted and explored the options of whether they're interested or not, so that we don't just have somebody wake up one day and, and they've been elected to the executive board. However, I understand that that fell on deaf ears in, in some manner, as, uh, George Barber's been nominated by, uh, LoPUD, I believe.
Right, and it was the LoPUD staff that sort of brought that up.
They did.
Except Steve wasn't there, and I think he's the one that nominated.
Yeah, um, so, uh, the other thing was that, as I said, we didn't conduct much business. The main, main information we got was from Mike Trinka in regard to the ice rink that's coming in here, about the, uh, the great venture and the, the, uh, white, uh, rolling of the dice. And I was a little amazed to hear some of these numbers, but that ice rink is a rented ice rink. They rent it for nine weeks at the rate of ten thousand dollars per week. And at the, at the end of that ninety thousand dollar expense, they pack it up and move it on back out. But, uh, you know, these, these done a lot of work up front, getting donations. Rotary donated twenty thousand dollars, I believe PG&E donated ten thousand. Feather River Hospital, I think, donated ten thousand. And then there were a host of other smaller donors to help defray that cost, and should be rather exciting. And he's very excited about the opportunity to see if this doesn't pull off and increase, uh, tourism and usage up here in Paradise. And, uh, uh, see, it's an interest. I think that they're, uh, they're committed to running this for three years and then evaluate and see if they have any shekels left in their pockets. And then we, we scheduled one more meeting, but, uh, once again, just like I did last month, I, I, I write these notes on my page, I, I staple my lunch receipt to it, put the mileage on it, and then I, uh, I, I get to my office and somewhere it gets eaten up. I, uh, I don't know when we scheduled our meeting for, it seems to me like it was in, for November this month.
No, it's been moved to December eleventh.
Was it December eleventh?
Yeah, they were going to have it in November, and then they moved it to December eleventh.
The other way around, then.
So George, you better be there.
Yeah.
To protect yourself, you may end up being president.
Okay, I'm not elected.
Yeah, but I mean, to keep yourself from getting elected.
And that was the, uh, the extent of our meeting.
Right, well, the, uh, the interesting thing is, it's only going to be open fifty-seven days, the rink, and they have to have over a hundred and seventy people a day in order to break even.
It's interesting, you know, there's no, it's not.
It's going to be a break even event.
Well, they're hoping.
I'm hoping that it is, but.
They're hoping it will be, it costs them people.
Seventy thousand dollars to run the power across this street.
PG&E.
To run, to freeze the water.
Hook up the free phase.
At li- at first, it was going to be a hundred and fifty thousand, but they were able to use some.
Dollar General store came in and had to change out a transformer, which is what cut the price.
Saved them seven, saved them around seventy thousand. But I can't believe that they're going to, I hope they make it, but I can't believe they will. I kind of wondered what happens if it's a pouring down a rainstorm, the people are not going to come.
Well, they get additional rental income from the umbrellas.
Okay, the umbrellas.
Right, and they are going to serve alcohol.
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Amazing.
We're going to have some.
Nothing goes better than ice skating and alcohol, right?
Holiday.
Does tend to get the money flowing.
The cold. With that machine going, going, if it rains, it's going to be snowing.
Yeah.
It won't be raining, it'll be snowing.
We know from my fair experience, hot weather or rain kills people from coming out. They just won't do it in the rain. Be ready, so you see what happens there. Maybe it's snowy, who knows?
Well, it's ten dollars per person, eh, all day. But they say that the average person only lasts a couple hours.
I think he said forty minutes.
Was it that?
Yeah.
Better than that, I was, I was thinking, but with alcohol, it might be a little longer.
It should be a very neat, I know my. Keep the ambulance is pretty busy. The one up in Ashland does, uh, seems to do quite well, so.
They're also going to have food vendors.
It should be.
Interesting.
It should be equitable for the businesses in Paradise. If they're, uh, constructive in the way they do it. Thank you for those board reports, we're going to go on to the general manager's report, item number five. George, if you would please.
You do not have my written report because I was on vacation. Give you a verbal, the best I can do. Since Keith Welch is here, I'll start with our CCC grant efforts, and I haven't talked to you, if you, I'll let him jump in and let us know where we're at in that process.
County, uh, CCC was given a, a big chunk of money, uh, through Prop forty, and, um, there was, uh, certain qualifications that had to be met for, uh, proposals to be forwarded. And, um, the first, uh, first requirement that you had to meet was, uh, you had to be in one of the fifteen counties in the state of California that were eligible for Prop forty funding. And Butte County was the farthest north out of all the counties that, uh, were eligible for funding. The second requirement was that any work that was going to be done had to be done on, um, state responsibility areas, which are areas that CAL FIRE has responsibility for, uh, suppressing fires on. Couldn't be part of, uh, an area that was covered by the local, uh, resource, or, or local response area, which would be the Paradise Fire Department. And, uh, another requirement was, is that the area that was going to be worked on had to be identified by CAL FIRE as being a watershed, um, assessment at risk. And, um, Miguel, your reservoir met all those qualifications. So I approached George and asked him if there would be any possibility for, uh, CCC to come in and do some work, uh, along, uh, around Miguelia Reservoir. And George identified that the whole, if that map is correct, north wa- north, south, east, west, everything along the right side, which would be the east side, um, east side from the dam, going all the way back, um, there's quite a bit of property there that could be, uh, uh, fuel could be cut on, and we would do a, um, shaded fuel break. So we're looking at sixty percent reduction in the overhead canopy and, uh, reducing the, the effect that if a wildland fire was to, uh, to start on the hill and then start going downhill towards the reservoir, there'd be a shaded fuel break, which would enable, um, firefighting forces to get in and hopefully stop the fire and reduce the amount of erosion and other detrimental effects to the water supply for the, um, Miguelia reservoir. So, uh, I submitted four grants, uh, the PID proposal being one of them, and so far, we've made it through the first round of, um, first round of cuts. And, uh, so we're still in the running. And, um, I guess the thing that I'm looking for tonight is, um, the one document that we need that I can't do is to get a, a SEQA done for this project. And, um, I, I'm going to need like a letter of support, an email letter, uh, saying that the PID would pay for the SEQA document to be done. Um, I think that this qualifies as an, uh, under the SEQA regulations as a notice of exemption, which means it'll be a fifty dollar, um, filing fee. Um, we're not going to disturb any of the land, uh, we're going to cut, um, on the, the property, and then we're going to run everything that we cut through a chipper and blow the chips back on, on the property. So it would add to a mulch layer, which would hopefully, um, decrease the, uh, level of erosion from any kind of water running down into the reservoir. That's basically it, so.
Could we do that in-house?
The SEQA, um, partially.
Yeah, because I think the town does theirs in-house, the ones.
There's a cultural review and a biological review, and they have a different level for shaded fuel breaks. And we've worked with, uh, Cali Jane and Butte Fire Safe Council in the past, helping us do those. They're a little less, um.
In-depth.
Expensive and in-depth, and so, yeah, it would be reasonable. I'm, I'm thinking we're talking about one to two thousand dollars is what I'm guessing.
Uh, CAL FIRE now does the fire department in Paradise, does that make a difference?
No. So that was the first thing I looked at, was I figured we could have all of Paradise.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly.
It's still listed on all the CAL FIRE maps as a local response area.
They're just subbed out.
It's like contracted, essentially.
And, uh, I guess the thing I failed to mention was, is that, um, right now, the, the proposal that I've turned in for is for about three thousand hours of core member labor to come and work on, uh, cutting the, the shaded fuel break. So, um, a, a crew, uh, which is about ten core members, can usually put in about, um, a hundred hours a day. So if they work five days a week, uh, we'll be able to put in five hundred, five hundred hours a week. And for three thousand hours, we'd be able to have six weeks of, um, of work that would be completed, uh, while we're working on that project.
Good amount of.
How does the grant funding work? Does the district cover workers' compensation?
No, CCC covers that. So the, other than the SEQA, I don't think that there's any real costs that the district would have, so the CCC.
Is, CCC is the grant recipient, where it's just our land.
Yeah, so CCC covers everything else. So we provide the, the equipment and the supervisors and the supervision and the training and the chainsaws, the chipper, everything else.
Well, a couple thousand would be well worth it, then.
Unless there's another place we can get labor for, for the kind of money.
For nothing, so.
So that leads me into the second one.
Thank you, Keith.
Jim Passanisi and I met with the Sheriff's Department. And, uh, while I was gone, Jim developed a little more, uh, project list with them. And, um, the sheriff has a fieldwork program similar to CAL FIRE CDC. They're a more local group, they're a group of, of people that are mostly same level, low threat, low whatever their parameters are. Most of them are actually in a home, um, home release where they've got ankle bracelets, and then they come into the place for the workday, and then they bust them up to the work. So we've identified some, um, more brushwork, et cetera, other projects with Jim?
Most of it's brushwork, Greg Dobbs has some little minor construction objects at the rink.
So we're, we're looking to use that, and note that they cover, um, it's a minor cost. Again, hun, I forget the dollar number, it's very low for a large crew. We do have to provide more equipment than the CCC provides, so they would be using our chipper, our, uh.
Our saws.
Oh, our saws, yep, shovels. They have. Safety gear in the restroom they bring, I think.
Do we hold any liability against, uh, them using our equipment? Someone falls on a chainsaw, whatever the case may be?
I don't think so.
We do training, even though right now, the sheriffs are training these people. They show up, Greg Dobbs gives additional training on the equipment.
The answer would be who's expected to pay for workers' comp, that's why I asked that question. If, if we're expected to pay workers' comp, then it's on us. If they cover workers' comp, then it's on them, unless there's some kind of gross.
In the case of a, in the case of a prisoner furlough for a better work furlough program or something like that, how would that be?
Yeah, I don't even know if they have to have workers' comp.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a privilege, yeah.
We, but that would be something that, if it came across my desk, I'd be looking for that. And I'm sure something, there would be a contract.
Jim got a contact, he'll get that verified.
I sound more like my boss every day, so, um, I gotta stop, I gotta stop now. Okay, but thank you, Jim, for looking into that, that's, that is good.
The Process Water Recycle Project, uh, we received a draft, um, analysis of options from the engineer to our staff, and, uh, they've been working diligently and have responded with their comments on that draft report. So as that gets, uh, worked through by the consultant, then we'll be getting closer to coming back to you with that report and the findings and any recommendations we would have. So it's, it's moving, moving along, moving forward. Corp yard is moving well, uh, getting, got most of the drywall in taped, uh, getting ready to texture insulation, quite a bit that's done, so there's a lot of accomplishments. You probably saw some concrete being poured out here for the electrical generator and the transformer pad. And so we're, uh, we're moving through, we got, uh, lots of gravel, yeah, and the base rock installed up behind the new shop. And along the other side, we've actually been moving materials from the old yard. Fittings, et cetera, are getting moved over and, and placed in the areas that we've got that lot finished. So it's, uh, it's going well, and it, it looks very nice, and I think the, the guys are very proud of the work they're, they're putting in there.
I looked at it today, and it didn't look very good, and, um, everything, equipment, and all the new parts and stuff on four-by-four pallets are stacked in behind it, and the, the gravel evidently is all done behind it, and the front of it's looking great, and they're all, we're working very industriously, and it looks like a lot's been accomplished. And I, it's been almost a month since I.
I thought you said it didn't look.
Yeah, I thought you said it didn't look great.
No, I said it looks.
That's why I was, and then, but then your description was, that sounds great. Are we sure that what, wasn't great?
No, you guys just are so used to me bitching about something.
No, no, it's, no, it really sounded like you said didn't look great.
Also, oh, okay, it's one of the ones. It looks good.
Shall we play it back?
We don't have the playback.
That's why your, your description, I was like, I was like, okay, I'm glad, that's, because that's what I saw, too.
So George, when do you think we're going to move in and?
That was going to be my question.
The big catch right now is the power. So we are, that's why we had to get that pad down, we're scheduling the crane, uh, to bring in the generator and the transformer switch gear and the transformers, that all has to be ready. So then we're going to be on PG&E's schedule, so that's kind of where we can't, we can't nail anything down because we have to have power before we can totally move over there.
Christmas morning, seven AM, be here, that's moving time.
So I can't give you a definite date, but it's getting closer, and that's kind of the, one of the big, big hitches.
We must also have more power there now than we have down here on Black Olive. Is there any power on Black Olive?
Yeah.
I mean, there's, I'm sure there's two twenty and all of that.
There's even a backup generator at the yard.
Okay.
Yeah. B reservoir grant application, uh, got, um, delivered and, uh, been received, and we've got lots of positive communication, getting some verification of, of different things from environmental and, uh, Kevin's stuff. So it's, it's moving along well, it's, uh, looking positive so far. And Silver Consulting, our grant consultant, helped, uh, with some of that final proposal writing and, um, kind of gave us input there, and they're still. They're actively looking for grant opportunities for the Process Water Recycle Project. They also are helping us with the low-interest loan application. But with the government shutdown, there's not a lot of grant offices open right now for her to inquire.
This was the girl that was here two months ago?
Yeah.
That did the, okay. How much of her twenty-five thousand she spent, do you know, George?
Nine hundred, maybe.
Only nine hundred dollars?
I think we just got a bill for nine hundred, something like that.
So she's got twenty thousand left, plus?
Yep.
Good.
Yeah, and that's really coming if, a lot of that's hoping she, we find a grant opportunity because when it comes to grant writing, there's a lot more work involved. And, uh, that's all I can think of right now, I'll answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Questions from the public? We will move on, thank you, George, and we are going to move on to. We will move on. Thank you, George, and we are going to move on to legal report. Dustin Cooper.
Okay, the.
Thank you.
I reported in the past about the legislative proposal to move the drinking water program from Department of Health to the state board. Thankfully, that bill stayed stalled at the committee level and that it, uh, didn't even make the governor's desk this year. Aqua is pretty confident that that's gonna be an item for the next legislative session. So it'll be something that, uh, I'll continue to watch and, uh, I think, uh, at least my recommendation would be we, that would be something that we would oppose. The only other item, uh, I have a number of items to discuss with the board in closed session. Uh, the only other item to, to mention here was, uh, I asked, uh, for a tour of the corporate yard. I hadn't seen it yet. Uh, so Jim Ladrini was kind enough to, to show me around. I did wear a hard hat, Bill. He'd be proud of me. Um, and I just, I had the same impression. I thought they did a great job. I could, I could really tell from seeing the guys that were working. It was a source of pride and it's really. And I'll have you know, it was on my time, Larry, in case you forgot.
He's doing it.
You were jotting notes.
I just checked off the legal report is done.
Oh, I, I looked at your bill earlier. I appreciate that.
So that's it.
Thank you, Dustin. Was there any comments from the public? Any questions from the rectors? Yeah, how much would you charge to write these letters that Baggett wrote? It's a lot of work. He did it for free.
He had a personal interest.
I know. He even, he, Bill says he even offered to raise money for the, for the rectory.
Brand, brand things for the park and rec for that part. Now, that's what he said at the park and rec meeting, so.
It reminds me, is that, is that your cane? That's yours? Okay, I thought so, but I was just like, did someone leave that behind? Okay, uh, so we, thank you, Dustin, for that. We covered 7A, so we've got 7B, but before we go on, I might skip around a little bit here. Um, is there anybody here from the cemetery district?
I, I don't.
Is Mr. Mark Roberts here? Let's see, sir, okay. Larry in the Creesia, and if I say it wrong, Klingvet, that's you folks, okay. Okay, so actually, I'm going to move up to 8C. Right now, new business, um, for you folks, so. What happened to 8B? I'm gonna move up to 8C. With the amount of time that we've had in order to look at this, um, I know that road well. I drove up it again this evening to take a look at it. But in noticing the letter from the fire department, it was 2006, which I think you referenced in your letter in there. And there's not been a fire truck up that road since 2006. No.
Over the second culvert, no.
Past the first one, yes, but not past the second culvert, okay. So, um, George really needs some time to be able to go down and talk to the town and talk to Paradise Fire Department and find out, because that letter was drafted by the.
Carolyn Manley, previous fire marshal.
Previous fire marshal, exactly.
Fire marshals ago, I think.
So we have something that's outdated. My, my question was, how do you get a load bearing on something? Did they stand on top of it and decide if there was 40 more thousand of them that that would be enough to collapse that culvert? How is they, how are they determining, you know, how? Yeah, so, um, I want George to be able to have some time and if the board's okay with this, I'd like to table this for right now. And I appreciate you guys sitting here. It's why I wanted to ask you. I know you've been patient and sat through it with us. But I think he really needs more time to just go, we got your letter on the 10th, or at least it was dated the 10th. I don't know when it actually arrived to us here. We're here at the 16th. There's been maybe four working days. And George just hasn't had enough time to, to go in and investigate and, and set up the proper meetings with people and find out what does the town want? What does the fire department want and what do we need to do in order to make this a viable solution for everybody there?
So do you have any other questions for us that would make that process easier?
I, I would like to ask a question because you're asking for, um, money to be raised to fix a road. And I wondered why, have you gone to the town with this? Because they do all the roads.
Is this road ours?
This is a road.
This is actually our road.
It's actually our road. It's not an easement.
Correct.
We own the road then.
Yeah, there's somewhere possibly between five and 10 miles of roads in Paradise that PID owns.
Really?
And a lot of it was owned because we had a pipeline going across the.
Field.
Field.
Exactly.
And then these, these, uh, and we probably owned the larger parcel as a district and then pieces got sold off. And rather than reserving an easement, for whatever reason, the district decided to keep that land in fee that we owned. And so, uh, this is one of them that we have. We have other ones that we've dealt with in the past. They're, um, kind of a problem oftentimes, but, uh, we, we deal with them as we need to. They're not surveyed. Uh, the, even a level of effort to survey them and try and determine, uh, true ownership, et cetera, what we own and what we don't, that would be very costly.
So we're not in the park business, but we're in the road business?
No.
No, we're not.
Actually, we're not.
We, uh, we have.
So can I just address that for a minute?
Yes, yeah, please do.
Okay, so I understand that you're not in the road business, okay? But I'm gonna give you an example. I understand that PGE is bigger than PID. I get that. But years ago, they wanted, they're not in the tree trimming business either, but years ago, they realized that it was easier or cost effective for them to go down roads, trim the trees themselves because the people weren't doing it. And that's exactly what we are running against. Is no one wants to take responsibility. Two thirds of these homes on these roads now from 40 years ago that were owned are now renters. Renters don't wanna do it. They don't wanna tell the owners because they're gonna raise their rent. And so what I put in the letter was the possibility of a surcharge. If you're gonna still have PID, I see everybody's computer and laptop technology is gone now. And that means speaking needs to be different too. It is not the 1940s and 50s anymore. And people don't wanna do it and it's not my responsibility to go to people and say, you must do it. And PID has nothing in place that if people don't maintain their roads, that there's no consequences. So what do we do? Well, I'm personally taking this personally because $40,000, we've had two estimates on our home. $40,000 off the top because of this road.
Is it because of the culverts?
It's, it's the road, it's all of it. It's the fire department can't get across the second culvert. It is a width issue. It's erosion issue. Nobody does any drainage, so it floods. There's erosion. It's awful. And I also put in the letter, we just had a yard sale. Those proceeds went to fixing this road, but I am telling you, it was eerie because every person that came up goes, what a nice place. Too bad, it's on the worst road I've ever seen in Paradise. And it was like, repeat. It was like somebody was standing at the end of our driveway telling them what to say. And I don't wanna do it. I just, I'm glad you hear it, the fire inspector. At our property, we have a property that's adjacent to ours that is, in his opinion, a severe fire hazard. So as the fire season closes now, we're gonna leave it alone, but in May, I'm to re, re, go back to him. And he's going to write a letter to this person because we have a structure right there. So if it burns, we're gonna have problems. So I am taking it personally. That's why we're here. This is to us, this is a serious matter. Just, we've listened to the word safety over and over tonight. I've listened to the word investment. Very nice presentation. Investment is very important to PID. Am I correct? Okay. It is to us too, because this home is our investment. So if we lose it, for whatever reason, if we sell it and take a huge loss, we're the ones that are suffering. So I'm asking PID maybe to rethink how they're approaching the roads, that maybe there should be a surcharge, just like a hydrant. There should be a surcharge on there for every person that lives on a PID road. You have a surcharge for road maintenance. And whether PID, if you're not in the road, you should, can subcontract out for someone to do those. That's, that's it.
We do appreciate your comments. We do have to look at this. The surcharge raises very questionable.
Yeah.
Things that we can do as a public agency.
But I can tell you, with this being put off to next month, I'll be able to talk to the town of Paradise. I'll be able to talk to the fire department. I'll be able to talk to legal. And, and I will sit down and, and meet with you guys before the next meeting so you kinda understand my findings before it comes back to this board.
All right.
But let me just give you a little preview about, because I don't want you, want you to have false expectations. The district is severely restricted in how it can surcharge people. It, it actually doesn't have that authority. There's a process called Proposition 218 where the voters have to impose that on themselves. So, and the board's well aware of that. We went through it, uh, a couple of years ago. So unfortunately, it's not something that the district really has the power to, to do, even if it wanted to.
You're the attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
And so what is this, how do you get people to do what they're supposed to do? PID doesn't have anything in place. So what do you do?
Well, I would, you know, I represent the district, so I can't represent both you and the district, but I'd encourage you to get some legal assistance. And, you know, hopefully in George's discussions with town and the fire department there, we can come up with some kind of solution. Cause I, I understand your problem and, and I'm sure I could speak for the board that we, we wish we could help you in any way we can, so.
And that's why we want the time for George to be able to go to the town and PFD and, and see what. If we didn't care, then we wouldn't have him invest any of his time in this, so, but we want to have him invest time.
Should we consider making a policy for all of these roads? That you said we own five to 10 miles of roads around town? Are they all?
Yeah, there, there may be one.
So one, one more comment to that.
Yeah.
When we sign, when you go in and you sign up the title company for your home, okay? It tells you that this is a private road, it's PID owned, and they're giving you easement rights to get to your property. That is all it says. It does not tell me that I have to maintain the roads.
Those culverts.
Replace $70,000 worth of culverts. Now that's 70,000 to the layperson. Somebody like PID is gonna get that down a lot cheaper. It doesn't say anything about that. It doesn't, it is not specific. It is, I keep hearing, well, yeah, but it's common knowledge that on a private road, we've never lived on a private road before. We ask those questions. That just means that they're giving you permission. Do I, no one told us we had to do this step. So when you, why is that not more specific?
That's a question you should go back and ask your Realtor.
Yes, that's why I, the question I asked was, is there not some type of disclosure process where you would have been made aware that this is your road?
I've been on the phone a lot. I personally called the title company in and said, what am I missing? Because it does, I have gone through every word of this paperwork, 70 pages, by the way. And it says nothing. It just tells me I have easement rights. It doesn't say anything. And he went back through, he investigated and he said, there is nothing that you signed that was specific.
How long have you owned the property?
24 years.
24 years. I, I thought it was 24. George, what was the $30,000 per culvert? Did you ask a contractor?
In 2006, I had two estimates done and of course, they only lasted 30 to 60 days, so I did not bring those. But their cost was anywhere from 28 to 35,000 per porch.
What size of culvert are you talking about?
Uh, I'm gonna say they're probably three foot.
Big culverts. If you don't, if you look, look real closely, you drive over them without actually noticing that they were underneath you.
You, you go down there when the garbage truck goes by there and you watch his wheels where he is from side to side.
Yeah, you don't have, I couldn't see that you had much sag in the culvert. You definitely have a width issue.
Yeah, it's width issue. It's more width than weight.
Yeah. Yeah, so. If you will give George.
I'm a fighter now. I'm gonna leave you with this. It's been a long meeting, right?
Right.
Robobank, my eight-year-old granddaughter said, they are so silly. Why did they name it Robobank? Do they want somebody to come in and rob a bank?
Robobank. So, um, we are going to table the, uh, item 8C until George has had the proper amount of time. I'm not gonna say just till next month. I'm gonna table it until George has had the proper amount of time to do the investigating he needs with the town of Paradise, PFD, the Klingvets, so that we can have these conversations and make sure that we're addressing all the issues that are out there.
Are we gonna hear from George at some point?
Yes. You will hear from George directly.
Like I said.
Can you look into some legalities of what you, you could do to maybe change that? Some, some ideas.
Us, sir? Well, I'll have a discussion with him, but I'll be able to explain it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, folks. The first thing I realized, when I moved up here, the first thing a real estate agent told me is don't buy on a private road. I can just table that. I don't need a motion.
No.
Correct, okay.
That, that, this, this is a problem in every district. If you're an ag district, you've got ditches that, who maintains it? Are they privately owned, but you're running district water through it? I mean, every district has a similar issue.
Yeah, I didn't realize, I, like, finally, I figured, well, why are we doing with the road? I think, well, we must own it. George told me some interesting places we own prop, we own part of a road at and. So I guarantee it's probably a 50-foot section, you know, in the middle of a nicely paved road, you know, so it's.
Which of these roads do we own? Shady Lane, Oak Street?
We own Shady Lane. I think we own East Oak Street.
We own Shady Lane?
How about Holly?
That's, that's oak. They're shady.
I don't think we own Holly, but we own that one that says Nunley Road there on the upper left-hand corner of that, where it's actually just a driveway. And then you own.
That goes straight off the corner there. The Nunley goes straight off the corner into the, basically down into the woods there where you get to the stop sign. Okay, there.
So that strip, we own that. And we own Portion Academy Drive.
I didn't even know there was a road through there.
I don't think, Shady doesn't actually connect to Nunley because it's fenced.
Well, let's put those roads up for sale. To somebody who can, who can assess a toll.
We'll give them to the park district.
Maybe they could make it toll roads or something, somehow to pay.
Okay, um.
I'm, I'm considering buying.
Still a toll bridge.
I can see a revenue stream here.
You want a key to the gate?
If we don't have anybody here from the cemetery district and Mr. Roberts is here, I'm gonna go ahead and, and I'm gonna move to him. Um, I appreciate you sitting patiently while we get to you in here. So, George or somebody, whoever it wants to be, that's going to expand on the rule of what we consider to be an irrigation, a residential irrigation account.
Right.
As opposed to a residential account.
I have, I have the language in there. Irrigation or residential irrigation water service accounts are defined as those using water on two or more acres for illegal agricultural endeavor. So the, the key on this one is two or more acres. I, I'm not real familiar with, uh, Mr. Roberts or, or his, uh, some of the verbal conversations he's had with our billing department. But he was, um, wanting to change over to the residential irrigation rate. Because I believe he has an orchard on the, his property, but his property does not fit within the irrigation, residential irrigation, um, definition. And so basically, our hands are tied. We, we follow procedure. We follow, um, what the board's policies are and this is what the board's policy is. So his next step was to, uh, petition the board and ask for a definition change to the irrigation policy.
So we made some sort of definition change.
Your definition change.
The person that had that had over two acres, if I'm not mistaken. He had like four acres.
Changed the size.
You, you.
Changed what, what. The two acre part of the policy has been in place for. The two-acre part of the policy has been in place for.
As long as I have been.
Since all, yeah, since all of us.
Actually, two acres, residential irrigation with the two-acre description has, was been in place for many, many years, but until a few years ago, it was actually frozen. The board had, previous board had taken action to no longer allow new residential irrigation accounts. We came to you, or through a customer appeal a few years ago, where they were growing the crop for.
Donation to food for families.
Yep, for a donation for food for families, but they had a resident on the property, therefore, they didn't qualify for regular irrigation rate. The board reopened the residential irrigation rate to people again. And then, subsequent to that, we had an appeal about.
Farm animals.
Farm animals, and whether you were selling it, and that's when this latest definition came. It did not matter whether the endeavor was for farm animals, as long as it was agricultural. And it didn't matter if you sold it for a profit, or if you gave it to your neighbors, you have allowed that as an option. So what we've gone forward with, and we've had multiple inquiries, we go out, we measure what they have under irrigation, and make sure it's two acres, to make sure they qualify for that rate. And in this case, the property is not even two acres, so there wasn't even an option for us to even evaluate the orchard, because the property isn't even of that size, so.
Okay, Ag man, I want your input.
Well, I'd like to ask the man that owns it, what are you, what are you doing with the property?
Mr. Roberts, yeah, if you want to.
I can speak here, thank you. Yeah, Mark Roberts, I live at fifty-six, nineteen Cherry Lane. I was born and raised in Paradise. I was actually born in the Yeoman Orchard vicinity at that time, when I was a kid, and moved over to where I am now, off the Fernwood Orchard vicinity, which is Cherry Lane. So, when I was a child, everybody lived in or near an orchard, so that's the way I was raised. So, we raise fruits and vegetables, and we rely on them. We use them for ourself, and we distribute them with our friends and our neighbors, as a matter of fact. Why all these people left me after they were done with the park discussion? They encouraged me to come support them, because we live with our back towards that park issue. And then they got up and left.
They didn't stand with each other long, did they?
I'll remind them next time they come and.
Want some free vegetables.
Pick a row of corn, or a couple lugs of peaches, that my water bill is exceeding my budget, yet I have done nothing different in the last thirty years that I've been there than I'm doing now. I understand that you guys have decided that two-acre parcels meet this criteria, but a one-acre parcel doesn't, yet I've spoke with several people, including myself, which owns another parcel of property, which is the old Salisbury Place in front of the Adventist Church, which is a three-acre parcel, which has a large pond on it, where we raise no fruits and vegetables at all, yet it qualifies under the guidelines of just square footage for that reduced rate. And I get that reduced rate, and it's, it's the property across the street from the Gold Nugget Museum, and behind the hobby shop. Now, my argument is that you have allowed people with two acres or more to irrigate for business purposes, but in reading this, it says that, the verbiage says that the, the water service accounts are defined as those using water on two or more acres for any legal agriculture endeavor. And I'm certainly not doing anything illegal, so what I am doing is I'm producing things for my family and, and about everybody on the street, like I was raised. And these are just some snapshots that I pulled from just the backyard of, of my property, which houses over thirty fruit trees, and rows and rows of corn, squash, tomatoes, pumpkins. Here's a chart with each circle representing each fruit tree, and the areas that we grow a variety of things, from, like I said, pumpkins to cucumbers to berries. So, I guess my argument is, I have two properties, one which I'm able to access that discounted rate, yet I use it. And then a property that I depend on, because of my lifestyle, yet I'm being penalized. And that's what I, I feel like people with two or more acres are being subsidized by PID, or, maybe that's the wrong word, and I shouldn't be looking at George when I'm saying that, but those people are being subsidized with a better rate, including myself, for the property that I have off of Chapel Drive, and that's great, you guys, I appreciate it. But I'd rather have that discount on my personal property, where I have over thirty fruit trees, and I depend on these things to can and eat and dry, and give my neighbors, and keep my lifestyle. And I'm, I'm a little baffled by, okay, why is a man who grows ten bushels of something on an acre penalized, and another man who can only grow two bushels, or no bushels at all of an item, get a rate decrease?
I don't think a person who doesn't grow anything is supposed to get a rate decrease, rate decrease. Right?
Right, but how do you know, how do you know how much these people are growing? They can have, there are orchards that qualify for that, and there are properties that qualify for that. And I have one of those properties, that I'm, I'm getting that discount.
But to get that discount, or that rate, you're supposed to be actively operating an orchard.
Okay.
Your older property probably predated this new opening, and so we only had a limited amount of residential irrigation. We weren't policing them, we weren't checking up on them, they just existed. Now that we have this, this opportunity reopened, we have the people commit to continuing to grow a crop on the two acres. We don't have the time or the resources to run around every year and check every one of these properties, and make sure that they're following what they committed to do. If you want to have my staff do that, we can put that plan in place, but you probably will find more than just his old place that is no longer operating under those rules.
Do, do they have, anybody that has two acres doesn't necessarily have that rate, is what you're saying?
They have to have two acres in production.
In production. That's what I thought, that's the rules we just changed recently to accommodate Mr. Sanchez. So.
So it has to be two acres in produce, huh?
Right. And the only reason Mr. Sanchez began to qualify is because he had, I think it was goats on his property, and he's irrigating part of his land so the goats could eat the grass, and therefore, he had more than two acres, and he qualified.
When we changed that, I think we were very fair. I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Roberts. Because it was, any application of ag is basically what it was. Like, I've been involved for eight to forty-seven years, and my property falls into it, and it's been, as far as IRS is concerned, it's an agricultural property, and USDA, and all of that for a small farm. Is yours fault if they do that category?
Well, my, the parcel on Cherry Lane, where, where I have all the fruit trees and grow my garden in my residence.
Do you have to do your costs off your income tax?
Do, excuse me, I don't do it, I don't do it for profit, I do it to.
Of course, you'd have to do your profits the same way. Even if you give them away, it has a value.
Right. So, yeah, the value is that I don't have to go to the market on Thursday and buy from somebody else, and I don't have to go to Save Mart up here and buy something that's tasteless, and there's the value.
Well, I think what Director Flesher's opting here is that you can offset your water bill, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, by getting a tax break? Is that what you're essentially telling them?
Yeah, if you declare a business, then you.
Even though you might just give it away.
Then you fall out of a whole different bracket.
This is where you go la, la, la.
That's why we kind of changed it around a little bit, it had nothing to do with me, because I haven't changed my property over to it, although I've owned the property since forty-nine, family has. And your Salisbury property, what are you doing?
Well, the Salisbury property was the old fish farmery.
I knew the Salisbury real well, they had a chicken facility, and.
And rabbits.
Wacky outfit, just beautiful people.
And they had, they had catfish and trout, and, well, we still have that.
And what are you doing with it?
So maybe that's why I'm getting, there you go, there's ag. Come over and plug the pond, it's, but right, right now, there's three residents on that property, and.
I have a little bit of years.
They're rentals, and it's, it's actually a memorial site for, for my father, which was Leonard D. Roberts. Long lifetime, pretty much residence after, after World War Two. So, anyway, so what you're telling me is that it doesn't, that it.
Doesn't.
Okay. So, so when I leave here tonight, is, I'm looking at my water bill, and I'm looking at the, the rates that they are, and the rates that they would be in comparison, and in the last two years, the difference is like six hundred and fourteen dollars one year, and, and close to four hundred and sixty-three the, the last year. And I'm thinking, that's considerable, that's over fifty dollars a month.
Do you ever get mail from USDA for ag census? Ag census mail, asks how much livestock, vegetables, whatever you produce?
No.
Actually, see, I get this in the mail. I run sheep, and they ask for how many head of sheep and so forth.
Right.
And as small as I am, they'll even call me up the phone when I get lazy and don't fill out the form, and take the information over the phone. So in a strange way, that would make you a farm, because you're part of the farm census.
Okay.
So, I don't know how that would relate to our policies here, but that's one way people become small farmers.
I'm still being limited by square footage, basically.
Yeah, that's what the.
And my argument is, why, why am I being limited because of, of my production on that? You, you see Vietnamese, Orientals, different cultures that come into this valley, and they take a postage stamp, and they can grow an elephant on it. It's incredible. So because of their knowledge, not necessarily tech knowledge, but the, the knowledge that they have, they're able to produce these vast amounts of produce that we really enjoy. For instance, coming up Clark Road.
Strawberry.
And, you know, this, I think, is the basis of my argument, and this is something that I, I, not a flash in the pan, I didn't just move into town. My mom walked to Reinigan Hospital and had me and walked home. So this was before Feder River Hospital, I've been here for a while. It's frustrating that I can't continue the same lifestyle that I was born into. I know that times change, and I know that also, things progress.
It sounds like that you've been living there for thirty years, so I would, I would say you have been living the same lifestyle. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, I'm trying to. It's, it's becoming financially not possible.
Okay, but what, you're asking for.
Thirty years ago, water was a lot cheaper.
Thirty years ago, my father used to turn PID on when we went to Los Angeles for a week, because it was a flat rate.
Yeah.
And, and that's the way, and when they, when they watered the orchards, they opened the valves off of Skyway, and they, and they run them back and forth through the ditches, and, and the excess water ran off into the creek. So, yeah, those things have changed, I understand that. I also am conservative as I can be, in growing everything that I can on every drop of water that hits the ground.
But what you're, the basis of your argument, though, is this. You're asking for the other ratepayers to subsidize your water. And your argument is, because you grow vegetables. Well, if I had one tomato plant growing on the back of my deck, you know, why wouldn't I get the same low rate also? So really, what you're telling us to do, if we, if we don't want to differentiate from all of our clients, would be to reduce our rates to every single one of our clients. And then we would not have enough money to run the district. History has it where the farmers up here get virtually free water. Now, that may be a little bit of an overstatement, but it's the cheapest water that, that is going there. The biggest users, the farmers, the Inoble Orchard, and whatever else is going on around here, whatever is still remaining, have this huge amount of water usage and very small bills for that. And why? Because that's the way the world evolved, that's the way the population said we need to encourage farmers. We do what we can, to some respect, we make up rules, and we help along with this, but we have to make a, draw a line somewhere. Because if we move it down to one point three six acres, and then next week, we move it down to one, and the week after that's a half, and the week after that's a quarter, what about the guy with the tomato plant on his back deck?
Right. My concern is, why does it have to be limited to square footage? Why does it have to be limited to one acre? And also, all the, the man that does have the tomato plant on the back porch, I probably would think that he's not too concerned about his water bill. I'm in a whole different category than the man with a tomato plant on his back porch.
Well, I would suggest you sell some of your vegetables to those neighbors instead of giving it away.
Then we run into all other types of issues. We, we run into, okay, seller's permits, license, fees, taxes, and all these other things. So, what, you know, what's the trade-off here for financially, whether I'm paying PID, or if I'm paying other, other sources?
Yeah, I don't know.
Is there, have you talked to like a financial or a tax advisor about, because you basically donate this food to other people, is there a way that you can get a write-off as a person that grows it? That's gonna help you offset your, I mean, basically, you've got to offset at this point six hundred bucks.
Six hundred and fourteen dollars.
Exactly. Which isn't, I don't want to say that's not a huge number, I understand your wallet, I'm not saying I don't understand six hundred and, you know, and forty dollars. But that, in the scheme of taxes, that's not probably a huge number, I wouldn't think, to be able to be offset with a donation, so.
But a donation has to be made to a charitable organization.
So we got Larry here, that's a tax person, he's not gonna give you any tax advice, but.
You can't give to people and take it off as a donation. You have to give to a charitable organization. They have to be.
So, he was donating his food to like, for families.
Right, then he could, then he'd have a tax write-off.
Mark, what kind of irrigation do you use?
I'm using PID, and, you know, that was.
What kind of sprinklers, I think you're asking?
Do you use drip?
Oh, yeah, I use all, a variety of things. I did plumbing for years and years and years, so whatever's applicable. Some of the things like to be watered at the foot, some of it likes to be watered overhead. Some of it's, it's sufficient just to use drip. So it's not like, I'm not saturating an acre every day with an inch of water. I, I can't afford that, I wasn't raised that way, and, and I.
Well, maybe I should explain, Doug understands what I'm after, but drip system is a very small pipe, and it drips.
Yep.
And it wets just a small area around, and we use it in trees and orchards, and then we use low-rate sprinkler heads. And overall, if you're interested in ag, the amount of water used in our rice crops, our orchard crops, et cetera, has gone down considerable in the last twenty years because of this new technology of small emitters and all of that to use down the water. I was just asking, I didn't look at your, how much water you're using, but that's some way to conserve water and to still raise as much, or even more. Actually, we found in some situations, you can raise yields by using drip and the small-rate sprinklers. Well, while actually using less water.
I understand all that.
I don't think.
I can appreciate that. I can appreciate also the guy that came that had goats, that was irrigating, irrigating a grass crop so that he could feed his goats, which is one step removed from growing a peach tree and picking a peach and eating it.
Well, we changed it because.
He also had orchards.
He could, he could grow peaches, and then the goats could eat peaches, and, and I'm sure the peach tree would take quite a bit more water than the, the small roughage that he does grow for the goats. And, and I'm sure the peach tree would take quite a bit more water than the, the small roughage that he does grow for the goats. And he came to you with a great concern of his because he wanted to maintain that and, and he asked for that. And it's not like every person that owns the size property that I own is gonna come to you and say, you know what, I'm producing agriculture and I have for thirty years and, um, I'd like to be considered for, uh, this rate because it's gonna save me six hundred and fourteen dollars a year. And that's gonna be fifty dollars a month that I can use for something else, maybe my ten-year-old or football or, or some of his needs. And so all I'm trying to do is make my dollar go as far as I possibly can and, and still maintain what I've done for a long, long time. And it's not an abuse and it's not illegal. And I'm, I'm, this and I'm still baffled. I know that you guys have come to the decision that we're gonna stick with two acres. And I don't, I don't understand that in relationship to how much you can grow in this town, a one acre, two acres, five acres or, or a hundred acres.
Well, that part of the rule actually has been around for a very, very long time. Nobody in this room was part of that decision.
Right.
So that's, the only thing we modified for it is going to the irrigation, the residential irrigation rate if you produced a crop. Because there's a lot of people with two acres. We reopened it exactly and modified the rule essentially, right? But we didn't change anything from what was adopted years and years and years back.
The thing is, there's an awful lot of lots in Paradise that are less than two acres where you can grow things.
Over one acre.
Right, and where you could grow things on. And if we lowered it, we probably would have to raise rates for everybody. Cause I think there would be a lot of people.
As Ken said.
Subsidize.
We kind of, we keep lowering this number. Or if we start playing with it and we keep lowering the number, we're at one point five and one point two five and one, and then it just keeps going. We just might not be there.
Just to remind the board, um, and this supports actually him a little more than, but to make sure you guys all have the understanding, when you sign up for the residential irrigation rate, you're committing to a certain amount of units of water that you're paying for every month of the year. And that's for your home portion. So in many times, if you had a one acre parcel and you didn't use a lot of water, you're probably gonna pay more under this rate than you would if you stayed with a, a B residential rate. And so just to wanna make sure, based on listening to you guys' conversation, um, that you understand that, that in the rate structure itself, there is a disincentive for somebody that is not truly irrigating to be moved to this rate.
Because the irrigation's only.
I'm hot for this even though I, I'm on the board. I fall under the category because of the fact that I have had that property and agricultural production and I have a whole bunch of four acres to be doing things now. It's because it will cost me a five hundred dollar backflow, flow preventer to be legal, you know? And then if you pencil it out, and I've done a little penciling on it, uh, this rate that he's talking about year round push the chub shot, you know, that big a question.
Yeah, we've had a couple of people come in and apply and when we, we audited their usage over the past couple of years, we showed them. You don't want this rate because you'll end up paying more over a year.
They think it only applies to, you know, June, July, August, you know, or September when they're using water.
No, I understand that.
And I know you understand that. I, I'm talking about people that come in before.
My winter rates will be higher than they would be normally if, if I switch to this, but my summer rates would be lower.
Yours, according to the little chart here, it would be five months that would affect him higher rates.
Right.
Steve would think he would save six hundred and forty dollars.
When you're not doing any water.
I know, I, I understand that. I understand that, but.
Half of your six hundred and twelve dollars, seventy-two dollars is also your service fee, right?
Excuse me?
Your service fee, twenty-nine dollars a month.
The service fee on.
Twenty-eight oh eight.
Drive.
Yes.
Twenty-nine twenty.
Yeah, twenty-nine twenty a month.
And a fourth of your service fee, forty-nine dollars.
Correct.
Five, tens, that's that's three hundred bucks right there. That's half of it. Or not quite half. I'm, I'm not making sense?
Times, times ten.
Well, I just.
It's three hundred dollars. Yeah, the service fee is three hundred dollars. But that's, I have a chart here that, that.
Go to the next page.
That shows the, uh, rates that have been.
This is what you wanna look at, Doug.
This, this is the chart.
This is what he would have, this is what he paid.
Shows the total that I spent last, was this two thousand twelve?
That was twelve.
Of one thousand one hundred and forty-one nineteen. If I was to move to the rate that would be higher in the winter and lower in the summer, we would actually cut it to six seventy-two sixty-four, which is four hundred and sixty-three seventy-five, uh, in savings. And I'm, I'm thinking, well, why not? And he's right, not every man that has an acre is gonna run and sign up for this because it's gonna cost them more. It's people that are gonna utilize it and do use it and, and understand it. I, you know, I thought about this. I've, I've talked a lot about it. I've done a lot of research on it and, I just don't agree with, you know, and I know the two acre thing has been in place. Maybe it's time to change the wording on that. Because the, the rates are going and the, the process that you're using, that the rates may be higher for somebody during the winter than they are the summer, they're, they're not gonna sign up for it. Plus rates are gonna go up again in January. So what's my bill gonna be next year if it was, uh, eleven hundred and forty-one this year versus six seventy-two? What's my, what's my bill gonna be next year? And there, there's another factor, um, you know, we have these smart meters now, which is great. Because at one point I had a, a leak and, um, I thought the smart meter system was intact and I wasn't contacted. And, um, you can, you know, you get a one-inch line that breaks undetected in the middle of the winter and you can use a lot of water. So when did that go into effect, the phone calls about, uh, water usage? Because I get calls from people that say, come out and fix my toilet. PID called me and said I used twenty gallons last night.
Phone calls have been in place, uh.
December?
March. Yeah, March, February, March of this year.
Of this year, not, not last year.
December, we started testing the stuff and then we started, we went on full online, yeah, this year.
What is the minimum rate on a residential, uh, whatever you call it?
What do you mean, what's the service charge?
Pay so much a month.
Nineteen, right up there.
You, you, it's nine, uh.
No, that's service charge.
Eighty-four.
Uh, it's a service charge.
Plus, plus you have to pay the eighteen seventy-two right up front.
Yeah, eighteen seventy-two is the minimum consumption charge.
So if you add those two together, that's your monthly fee, but you get a certain amount of water with that.
Okay, so how did in, how did in oh one, you've calculated he's gonna be paying nineteen dollars and seven, or seventeen dollars and ninety-four cents?
Yeah, this doesn't make sense.
You got eighteen ninety-two, eighteen ninety-two and then seventeen ninety-four. Seventeen ninety-four, last two, last two residential.
That's because that was the last, that was the rate for December.
Prior to the.
Oh, before our increase?
For the increase, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I was gonna say, how did we get seventeen ninety-four?
Thought you got us. You didn't.
No, no. I figured there was a reason for it.
Yeah, yeah, right, I see.
Okay, so I don't think that we can just tonight as a board say, Mark, we're gonna go ahead and make an exception for you. And I believe me, it's not.
We could, but I don't think it would be wise.
Well, because we're almost gifting public funds if we made an exception for one person and didn't change the whole policy.
Well, let me, let me speak to that, cause some, I heard the word subsidize a few times and that almost made me cringe. We subsidize. Remember Prop two eighteen is very specific. You said your fees are tied to cost of service. You can have a projection. You could have a reasonable, you know, uh, surplus that goes to, um, emergency accounts and those types of things, um, a reserve. Uh, but you, you can't just willy-nilly pick numbers out of the air and say, I think it's fair to charge these folks X and these folks Y without having a cost of service difference. So I know there's a historical basis for two acres and that historical basis for that predates Prop two eighteen. But it's very common for large water users to have a per unit less, lesser cost. Because when you look at it, and, and I'm not a cost of service expert, but when you look at cost of service, it's cheaper to supply water to high water users than it is to, to supply that same water on a much smaller scale to an individual homeowner, for example. So, so that's just a little background. That, that's kind of the legal context under which the board is struggling with your, your question. And if, if the board were to say, okay, we're gonna change our policy, that's then gonna have an effect on the cost of service as a district, as an entire district. Because the board at, I always tell the board what they're willing to do for one landowner, they should be willing to do for all the landowners that are similar, similarly situated. So.
We're required, we're required to do that.
Yeah, we, I, we, we have the subject to claims if we didn't do that. So, you, you know, nobody can tell you how many other landowners are kind of in your situation where you're less than two acres, more than one acre, but you've got some ag use. I, I don't know how many folks we have, but it's probably a significant amount if, if all those folks came in and said, I'd like that reduced rate. And then we'd have a cost of service problem. We'd have to then reanalyze under Prop two eighteen, whether we're collecting an adequate amount of funds. So that, that's kind of the context that the board's dealing with.
So where I was going with is in months to come, very soon, not too far off, we are going to be examining some Prop two eighteen issues. And at that point, it might be possible to then examine things like this. We can't just do it for one resident. Not that I don't think that the board members feel for you, but we can't just do it for one residence.
I doubt that there's, there's multiple residents.
And there might not be, but we can't just make a decision for one resident and not be at the scrutiny of the entire public. So, but we have some two eighteen things that we're gonna be looking at relatively soon. And at that point, it might be possible for us to then address it and incorporate it into there. In which case, when the people vote, they are voting for a change.
And the, the key there that you're saying is that is analyzed in the context of a study. It's either Kevin, you know, really sitting down crunching the numbers or it's an outside consultant doing some kind of a nexus study. But then there is some basis upon which.
For why we made a decision.
Right.
Or why we're bringing it as a decision to be made.
To, to be voted on.
To be voted on, exactly.
Well, also too, your land is only an acre and a third.
Yeah, one point three.
And so if we lowered the thing to an acre and a third, you still wouldn't qualify cause you don't use all your property for ag and you gotta use the whole amount for ag, right?
Yeah, it's two acres under production.
Right, it's gotta be under production. So we'd have to lower it a lot further than an acre and a third for you to qualify.
But, but here again, what, the, the argument is, okay, so I won't use subsidize. How much can somebody grow on a hundred square feet? Let's, let's George and, and the attorney and one of you gentlemen here, and I'll give you a bag of seeds. And next year, we'll bring our, our spoils in and we'll spread them out on the table. And then PID can say, hey, guess what? Maybe we should not subsidize, but help the guy that's producing the most.
Like I said, I don't think, I don't think it's that we don't feel for you. It's that because we're a publicly owned agency, we're owned by the people. We can't just say, if we were a corporation, we could just say, hey, sounds good. Mark gets a discount. Anybody who doesn't like it, tough. We own the company. We'll decide what we're gonna do.
I understand that.
Unfortunately, the people of Paradise own this company.
I, I'm, I'm looking for verbiage that includes somebody like me.
Well, I, like I said, I don't think it's that we don't feel for you. We've got two people here that have grown a lot of stuff during their course of their lives. And I know that you, I can tell from the pictures you brought, your garden's very important to you. I like growing stuff. Larry and Ken, I don't know how much they like doing agriculture or growing.
I like eating it.
But I, you can ask my fam.
Other people grow.
You can ask my family. I'm in my yard more than I'm in my house. So, um, I have a little different. I have lawn and plants and so forth like that and a little bit of garden, but it's not that we don't feel for you. It's that we can't just change the rule to apply to you, just one person. So we're gonna have to wait to look at this in time when it's a Prop two eighteen issue, which is coming up, like I said, in the near future. That we can go back and re look at this issue.
With that, so is this something that we can address at a later date? Or are you guys just?
Yeah, what, yeah, what you need, what, what I would suggest you do is follow up your letter, although it's all discussed here. Follow up the letter that requests that when we.
Review.
Next do a rate study, that we detail, or we evaluate the definition of residential irrigation and whether two acres is a valid number. And then that will remind us to throw it in the process to be evaluated by this board.
Let me ask you this. Motto family dwellings, apartment complexes, uh, mobile home parks, do they not also get the lower rate? As opposed to.
Not, not this rate.
No.
In fact, they end up paying.
Well, that's because of the service.
Usually actually pay more.
No, that's because of the service charge. That's not because of their water usage. I understand that because you guys moved my meter on Chapel Drive, one meter that serviced three residents, seven hundred feet down to Pearson, tripled my service charge and then made me responsible for that seven hundred feet of line that was probably put in by PID in nineteen fifty. So I, I understand how you guys are trying to squeeze every dime. Uh, and, and I understand that because I see this beautiful building and I see what you guys are doing with your equipment and I see you guys in the road and I understand all that. I'm a pretty savvy guy. I'm not coming in here out of ignorance and asking you guys to play dumb. I, I'm seriously, I, that's, that's not why I'm here. I'm, I'm here because I think that I have a legitimate, um, request and, and I wanna research it further then.
What I'm gonna suggest from here is that you write a letter to the district um, that is going to ask, that request that when we evaluate our next Prop two eighteen rate increases, that we address parcel size versus what you're producing on it, however you wanna word it, that applies to you. So that we can make the rate payers of Paradise responsible for that decision. We can't make that decision. And like I said, it's not that you're falling on deaf ears. It's that we can't make that decision and give away.
Understand.
Basically, we're giving away public money.
Understand that.
But if you make this request, then we can put it in and believe me, Kevin's got a model that he can put every single different type of account, which he has every single different type of account. And he can says, well, if we do that for Mark and let's assume twenty other people do that, okay? Which would probably be even maybe a high number in Paradise for that amount of lots. What, how does that affect our dollars? Then we can actually show it. Then there's been something that's been studied on it, like, like Dustin was saying, whether it be him or we have an outside consultant. And then the people of Paradise can't say, well, you just gave Mark a, a discount.
Understand that.
And didn't bother to give the rest of us one too.
Understand that.
So if you produce that letter, then we're gonna be able to move forward.
Well, that, that's why I'm here because if I didn't come here tonight, I'd be eighty-six.
You're becoming, you're becoming informed. We're becoming informed along with you, so.
So I'm, you, you, I keep.
I think Seth was giving you some excellent advice and also George. One of the things I was gonna say, on a little research, what you might wanna do is contact the USDA Farm Service. It'll be open now, I think. It depends on what the house does tonight, down the road or next week before you do this. To find out how they define a small farm.
There's a new program for urban farmers.
Yeah.
That covers your kind of acreage. It's been out about two years now.
Really promoting this type of thing.
Money through Farm Advisor and Extension Service. It should be available in Orville, Urban Farms.
What's it called?
U R B A N, Urban Farms.
Let's go to the USDA.
What he's doing is becoming more and more popular all the time. So it's, there's gotta be some avenue.
Even ag is, you know, even ag. Even ag is, you know, even ag, well, it's our number one industry, it's humongous, the average cattle herd, beef cow herd. On the United States Rages and Farms is less than twelve head. Takes three hundred and fifty to make a profit, but less than twelve head.
I understand that.
See, so, you know, you take a look at that, and they're really trying to promote small urban farms, exactly what you're trying to do.
Well, when you produce something on the size of, and and I was just using my backyard as an example, and and you grow enough that everybody on Cherry Lane's welcome to come there. And pick a lug of peaches or a row of corn. And I have my son out there filling buckets up every morning to dump, because the people don't, they have junkyards, you know? I have a job, but that's not their priority, but they love the produce and that they love the tomatoes, squash, corn, peaches, nectarines. And I'm just trying to preserve that, I love it too.
Get a sign down there on Pearson, donations I don't think qualifies anything, ask for some donations.
Yeah.
You know, to help against. But if you submit that letter, and I don't mean to cut you off, but we're gonna have to kind of move forward here as our night progresses because we have enough to keep us going probably till midnight. Please submit that letter so that we can review it during our Prop two eighteen.
Let me ask one more question then, so the property then on Chapel probably fell under the guidelines that that was the fishery.
Old school, yep.
And it's still a fishery basically, it's a catch and release, but so that's considered agriculture then, is that correct?
Probably wasn't even under that definition, it probably just wound up with that size meter and that rate, right?
I I don't know, I'm not gonna run out and put you on the other rate, just put it down.
Salisbury's were there, it was quite agricultural.
I'd move my garden over there if I were you.
Really?
Yeah, well, no, you can't, you don't pull up thirty year old.
Trees.
I don't mean trees, I meant the squash and the easy stuff.
Uh, both properties are used for for different, different things.
Right.
So, um, anyway, well, thanks for your time, I appreciate it, and yeah, I'll look into the suggestions you gave me and look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, Mr. Roberts was here, um, we're gonna go back to Bill's presentation, actually, let's take a recess, let's go till eight fifty. Something tells me we're gonna be here a while tonight because we have a a lot still to do.
Get rid of that Paradise District thing.
Since Mr. Neal is here and, okay, we'll reconvene at eight fifty six. In talking with Director Kellogg, we are going to take items eight E and eight F, and I'm going to table them for right now. Until. Bill offered to do E, I asked for F, so I could have a little more time to review that. And he was agreeable to that, and so we are going to table items eight E and eight F until next month's meeting.
Yeah.
The approval process of checks.
Okay.
And the general manager's ability to approve expenditures.
Are you gonna ask that?
Okay, so if we went back to Neil's. And George's thing, which is the Water Rights Update, I don't want Neil to have to sit here all night. And Jim, I assume is maybe here for that too. So I appreciate your guys' diligence and staying here till nine, but I'm trying not to hold you too much longer, so if you wanna go ahead and move forward with that, I'm gonna move to that one right now. I know Jim will have to probably stay for the. Seven B item, but.
It's not doing it up there though.
Oh, it's not? Pretty fancy.
Yeah, yeah. Very nice.
Well, I have a quick, just a quick update, you asked me to update you on where we're at and was just gonna highlight a few things of on Neil's work tonight. If you want a real detailed, um, even more in-depth update, our Water Rights Engineer has not completed. Review of our stuff, so they weren't prepared to come tonight and be of any value. So I wanted to bring you up to speed where on on Neil's presentation primarily and then kind of the general where I think we're at. This table you see right now is, um.
So I read this wrong, I was, when you said Water Rights Board, I was, I read it as Board Approval. To get extension in time, but it was an information only item, I thought, well, okay, that's an interesting way, winter resting way to approach it, but okay, I know.
So what you see here is the original summary of key analysis results that Neil put together, and again, kudos to Neil, this is a humongous. Spreadsheet analysis of all of our elevation data and our reservoirs and all those key points going back to nineteen ninety. Seven, a little earlier than that, and analyzing the reservoirs movements up and down and how that legally is interpreted for withdrawals from storage. And yeah, and diversions to storage. So after our meeting some months ago with Water Rights Board staff, we were looking at trying to maximize our use. And so you can see that, um. Under this first situation, our largest withdrawal from Megalia was twelve hundred and two acre feet. Our largest withdrawal from Paradise was fifty two thirty six. Uh, these are two different years, we learned that that's okay. For combines about sixty four hundred acre feet of our permit that is for ninety. Six hundred? Eighty, no, eighty's the next one. Eighty eight. Anyhow, oh, it'll come to me maybe. We had our, so this is the both both reservoirs, um, including excess direct diversion, if you remember, part of our problem is we're directly diverting in times when you use the definition. That we're probably not supposed to be. It's accepted, it's understood, we're trying to fix that in this process, so when you use, take all of our usage, maximum usage, you're looking at sixty three hundred and seventy seven acre feet. And our largest excess diversion, you can see grows quite a bit.
What's excess?
Excess diversion, direct diversion is when we are directly taking water from the system and and basically the reservoirs are um in a position. Under the legal terms, that we should not be taking water or that we can't take water, we're not taking the water, so it's either rising in the reservoirs or it's full. And we're taking more than our pre nineteen fourteen rate. So that was a big exposure to us, and our largest one was three times what, um. This amount, I'm losing it a little bit, but. Monthly wise, it's six seventy six, these are little good numbers, our largest treatment plant production was nine thousand two hundred and thirty six acre feet. The reason it's larger is our our direct diversion rate, our pre nineteen fourteen rate that allows us to directly divert water from Little B Creek.
You mean that we're using more water than we actually legally have?
Yeah, I've recorded that in the past.
Well, we legally have it, but it's under a pre nineteen fourteen water right.
Yeah.
Different water rights, basically.
Okay, but we have water rights for what we've diverted of some sort.
We're we're only dealing with the State Water Board, and the State Water Board's jurisdiction only extends to post nineteen fourteen appropriate rights. So they don't really look at pre nineteen fourteen rights, except, would you go back, George? And and I don't even know why they're that interested in that, the bottom figure there, largest water treatment plant production, is that just for our purposes or is the State Board's not really interested in that, are they?
No, it's more for our.
Yes. So the State Board is only interested in our two water rights that that are subject to their jurisdiction.
And those are our?
We, well, those, that doesn't include our pre nineteen fourteen.
No, no, I understand that, but what of our water rights that they're looking at? I, what I understand is that we've been holding water in our lakes and those water rights are pass-through water rights, is that the ones we're dealing with and we're not supposed to hold them in the, hold the water?
They're storage rights as well.
Huh?
They're storage rights, they're.
Storage rights, okay.
Maybe Neil probably knows the exact numbers, I've forgotten them, but. The one right entitled as ninety five hundred acre feet, I believe it is, and the other one eighty eight hundred acre feet.
Those are the ones the state's looking at.
Right, and our oldest one's ninety five hundred, and that's the one they want us to.
License.
License.
Yeah.
And here's how this all works, so when you, when you evaluate a reservoir and you evaluate when it's full, when it's dropping, when it's rising. There is rules that dictate how, what, what you call that water. You would think it would be as simple as the reservoirs are dropping, that would be a withdrawal from storage, and then they're rising, that's a diversion to storage, but there's this little caveat called regulation of water. And that means the direct diversion of water to a tanker reservoir in order that the water may be held for use at a rate other than the rate at which may be conveniently diverted from its source. The big key here is refill in Holer Park, this thirty day number, so when you start looking at the less than thirty days. That is being held, that's called regulation water, that you don't get to count as being diverted to storage or withdrawn from storage, both goes both ways, right?
Yes.
So in this case, when you evaluate Megalia here, we've got the green where we're drawing from storage, we get down to this level of storage, and we get a storm and we start filling up. This section right here, we count as diversion to storage, but since this little action here happened in that thirty day window, that becomes regulation water. We don't get to claim those two in either direction. And then you get a little one here, and there's one here, and there's another one here, and so Neil developed this spreadsheet that looks at all these different scenarios and helps piecemeal all of these. Rises and lowerings of the reservoir and put them in buckets of regulation, diversion, and withdrawal. Very, very technical evaluation. One of the things that we were told early on in that, in those numbers derived from the first slide, was that you went from a October first water year. To September thirtieth, that's your water year, that's how you develop these hydrographs, and that's what um is the basis for the calculation. When we, when uh, we met with the Water Rights Rights Board staff, their engineer told us that we have the flexibility to change. When our water year starts, based on the conditions in the reservoir. So if you go to the next slide, you can see that when we switch our water year to start at eleven thirty. Where we had all those blue water regulation water that we no longer got to count, well, now that turned red and green. So that regulation water really gets minimized. So go back to the last slide. You, we had a four hundred and thirty six acre foot diversion and a five hundred and twenty five acre foot withdrawal using October first. And you jump forward and we get to pick the start, it goes up to five ninety five and six hundred and eighty four.
Is that unique to this year or is that fairly common in all water years?
It's not uncommon for the district to experience something that looks something like this where. At the point where October first water year begins, we're seeing declines in the reservoir for some period of time after that, so it's not unusual to see first a dip and then a rise. But the way they kind of initially showed the analysis was that they were assuming that as of October first, reservoir levels would be rising. But if you do the analysis that way, you kind of penalize yourself, and so they indicated that we could. Move the analysis point around to wherever the water year would most benefit us, and so in an instance like this, it's pretty obvious to see that when you hit that low point, that's where you wanna position.
Now, if you go to the next slide. You can see that here's the same numbers from the first slide that were the initial analysis. It's sliding the year to what best suits our our permit or our our usage, you can see this is what uh the analysis shows. So an increase in some areas isn't that big, uh, one percent, if there's key areas like the largest Megalia storage diversion, we're getting a one hundred and twenty nine acre foot increase, which is twenty four percent. That's pretty significant, it was worth the effort and the evaluation and and a lot of work. The, when these, um, when all of this got sent to the state for to look at the data. The engineer mentioned to Neil that there is a possibility that you could petition the Water Rights Board to reach back. Further than the ten year permit period that we've been kind of locked into. And and so we did an analysis on that, and this, that would take effort, not a ton of effort from what our Water Rights Engineers told us. But you do have to make up a petition, they have to review it, and they'll have to accept it, and and basically approve us to reach further back in that ten year period. And go to the next slide, and you can see that when we reach back all the way. To all of our data, which is ten ninety six, that's the farthest back we have data that that we can use to make this type of analysis. Everything else beyond that, previous to that, paper, handwritten, uh, lake elevations, spotty in timing, you know, it wasn't. As often reads, et cetera, so this is where it was far back as we could go, but that was significant because that took us back prior to the lowering of the Megalia reservoir. So you can see if we're able to do that. We take our largest Megalia withdrawal, initial analysis of twelve hundred acre feet, and we are improving it, um, a thousand acre feet. An eighty seven percent increase. And if you look at our storage diversion for the area, that's another big jump from five forty eight to eight hundred for a two hundred and fifty two acre foot increase, or forty six percent. So that that's uh, that's pretty significant, it's kind of unique because it just happened to be a period of time where we took to draw the reservoir down. We took all of the water from Megalia and did no releases from Paradise, so we were using all of that water for that purpose. But it serves, serves a benefit for us. This latest data right here is in the hands of our Water Rights Engineer right now, that's one of the things they're evaluating. Cross checking all of Neil's work and getting prepared to move forward to the next step, which is kind of prodding the Water Rights Board staff to. Sit down and meet and come to a decision on what the language of our license could could read, because it is gonna have. Based on this information, it is gonna have maximum diversions from Paradise, maximum diversions from Megalia, what our total maximum diversions are, it's gonna address uh direct diversion issues. So it's pretty significant that we can get on the same page as them, because if we, or if us and Water Rights Board staff. Come to an agreement that we both uh agree upon and are satisfied with moving forward. Then getting that license, that water licensed is a very relatively fast process. And if you remember, I've been telling you about how people are fifteen, twenty years waiting for their water rights issues to be to the Water Rights Board itself. But when you're in agreement with staff, that timeline gets cut down considerably. So next steps, like I said, we're working with our, uh, getting our Water Rights Engineer for the district to um do a final review on all of Neil's work and all of my conservation work. And then hopefully we can come to a, to a final number on that license. And that should lead us to um enough information to to write the project description for our E I R. And then we can start the E I R process, so that's where we're at now. Did you have anything you kind of on board with that process?
No, I was just um gonna say, just kind of the strategy, you. The earliest permit is a nineteen sixteen, I think, priority date, does that ring with what you guys remind me? Yeah, so that's, that's a good thing, remember, water rights earlier in time, the the greater the priority. So it's kind of a balancing act, we want to justify as much use as we can under the earlier license, or excuse me, under the earlier, earlier permit. under the earlier license, or excuse me, under the earlier, earlier permit, and then take it to license. But the flip side of that is you also want to leave some flexibility to also build into your later permit. Because eventually, twenty-five, fifty years from now, whenever it is, we're going to want to take our other permit to license as well. So it's kind of this balancing game and it's a negotiation with State Board staff. It's based in large part on factual data, but it is a negotiation. And, you know, I'm kind of, I've been all over the place on this. When I first heard about the State Board staff saying, why don't we take this to license? I said, no way, we'll never, we'll never agree with them. And then I've kind of gone back and forth and I, I got a little hopeful and then I was pessimistic again. So, you know, I, we don't really know if this is going to be successful or not, but from the state's perspective, we have the oldest permit in California. The oldest. So we have.
We have the worst dam and oldest permit.
Our town without a sewer system, west of the Rockies too.
So we, it's like a giant bullseye from the State Board's perspective. You, you ought to take this permit and go to license. So, so there is some, I think, incentive from the State Board's side of things that.
What does go to license mean again?
If permits up the right. Right now we have a permit. And the theory being, okay, I, I'm going to build a dam, so I'm going to need a thousand acre feet. Well, so I build my dam, but I only have four houses, so obviously we're not using a thousand acre feet. But maybe fifty years from now, I can grow into that and I'm going to use my full thousand acre feet. So the permit period gives you, originally it used to be twenty, thirty years, where you can grow and have that full use through population growth, whatever. Now they're, they're more likely, if you get an extension, it's like ten years. But, but that's the theory. You get a permit, you grow into the use, then you go to license and you fix the right.
It fixes the right forever then.
Right, unless you lose it through waste or non-use, weight, unreasonable use or something like that.
And one of the key things about this reaching back, even though these are significant numbers, very significant, is Magalia is only identified in our oldest permit. So technically, without making a new application for more storage, more use out of Magalia, which isn't out of question, this is our last shot at claiming Magalia water. And so we want to claim as much as we possibly can out of Magalia under that permit. Because our newer permit is only for eight-hundred acre feet in Paradise at this point. We can petition to move that water, but that's, that's not a slam dunk.
So we can grab water coming out in the wintertime that we normally would have to release, correct? Is that what you're saying? I mean, normally we'd have to release that water out of Magalia?
No, when we, the benefits to this reaching back is we're grabbing that section in time where we drew Magalia down twenty-five feet.
It's a benefit when we rebuild or solve the Magalia part.
Okay, so that's when you'll be able to.
It doesn't help us now, but in the future.
Okay, I didn't know if it was water we could use, like, that we're passing through in the wintertime because the lake's full and we can only bring Magalia up so far, so the water's going through.
The direct diversion part is key to that, but it's really protecting our future at Magalia and, and getting that locked in.
Okay.
What, what, I wanted to change the subject to CEQA when you're through with this, ask about CEQA, what progress we're making. Have we hired an outfit to do a CEQA study on Little Butte?
We, we have them hired. They're onboard. And that's what I was referencing when we, we have to finalize these numbers to a point where we know they're as high as we can justify. Then we can move forward with CEQA. Because you have to describe the project in detail in CEQA. So you can't just guess and say, you know, our permit's this, so this is what we're going to use. You want to be able to back it up. We've used X amount out of Magalia, we used X amount of Paradise. And so part of this CEQA process, I think, and that's a question for Dustin, does going to license take CEQA?
Yeah, but we're going to agree to draft license terms with staff. Then we'll proceed with CEQA based on that agreed to license language. And then, once we finalize CEQA, the State Board will be listed as a responsible agency and they'll approve it presumably.
But you have to get close enough to what reality is, or you're really opening yourselves up to further potential lawsuits unless you well define that project.
The CEQA, it's been ongoing for two years now, almost I think.
The study is been a couple of years, yeah.
And do they have any results on the, you know, on this creek, on Little Butte Creek or anything like that, that?
All of the biological work is done.
Okay, we paid them for that.
We paid for that. It's just not, we're not in a position to release it publicly. And deliver it to other parts together with it and strategize between legal and.
So most of the CEQA is done, waiting for this to be done?
Yeah.
And then the CEQA will come?
The heavy lifting in CEQA is done.
Oh, okay, so this biological.
Now it's analyzing and writing.
To me, CEQA almost doesn't apply. We're not proposing the change in operations. We're going to operate the thing the same exact way.
Well, my concern.
That doesn't appease the State Board. The State Board wants to see a big shiny EIR.
Well, I'm not worried about the State Board. I figure you're going to take good care of them. But I'm more concerned with local environmental groups, Little Butte Creek empties into Butte Creek. So that's a really protected thing. It's looked at by a lot of groups. And Little Butte goes in and, and I think we need to have that CEQA for the environmental community on the biological reports and so forth. Do the, I've been told the fish can't get up to, there's a.
There's a natural barrier.
Barrier where they can't get up to the reservoir. All that information will, should go to local environmental groups where they don't create problems for us.
Will they be able to read the CEQA after we're done?
Yeah.
But we can't, we can't complete, we can't complete this final step, otherwise we have basically an invalid CEQA. Or it could be deemed invalid.
Well, not invalid. You just want it done correctly so there's less chance of arguing it and a, and a very good explanation of what the impacts are, like Dustin said, are negligible. And try and convince that community that this isn't a big dragon slayer, anything like that.
Is there a time limit on these studies that we've already done?
No. No, there, there isn't.
But the environmental community always wants to see more studies.
Yeah.
So they're going to, they're going to critique this. I don't think we could tell you that we're not going to receive comments or something like that, because I think we will. We may even get it.
I just didn't want the study to run out and we have to redo it.
Well, that's, it's kind of the balancing act we've been going with because once you've completed the CEQA, you know, there's parts that we may not agree with State Water Rights Board staff on. And that could drag that process out. So then if you've adopted your EIR too soon, it could be argued that it's stale by the time the board actually takes action. So it's kind of a delicate.
That's kind of what I meant by invalid, are we, yeah, are we producing something ahead of schedule?
But I forgot, I forgot an element of the project, which is, aren't we talking about expanding the sphere?
Sphere of influence, yeah.
Yeah, so there.
The environmental community is going to have a lot of say in that. And part of, you know, part of that whole discussion with them is hoping to convince them that, you know, that's, the, the growth in those areas is not dictated by PID, including that in its boundary. And that they need to understand as a community, you've got a two-edged sword here. Because you have to prove you have the ability to grow for the Water Rights Board to say, yeah, you can hang on to that water for your future. Versus if you don't show that you have that ability to grow, they're going to want to slice you back and say you don't need that water. So it's a.
Is, is the spirit going to be similar to when it started and then dropped or?
The boundaries, I believe, are, are the same that you adopted earlier. The Walmart section of it, we had discussions about slicing that out because In-Lasco was okay with that. I don't know that I've had that adopted by you guys yet as wanting to do that. So I, I don't think I'm bored with the decision of what the fine boundaries.
Yeah, that's the only controversial part, and since Walmart hasn't built anything and owns the property in Dragao, it might not be much of a concern at this point.
So that's where we're at.
Well, thank you for the report.
Thank you, Neil, George's staff, anybody that was included. That's, I know that's a lot of data. Is that the new bread? Is that a new pointer?
It's my new laser pointer. I'll see if that thing worked. I'm playing with it.
Your laser pointer? What's it in the computer?
Yeah, it's the newest version of PowerPoint.
The newest app? So now you have a laser pointer.
I did.
Mark and Tony, are you just here for the fun that we're having tonight?
It's better than reading a book, watching TV, come down here and sat with us, huh? This was your joy, so now the movie theater's just about in the opposite direction, so.
This is a lot more fun.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're, I'm sure we're more entertaining. Thank you, George. Thank you, Neil, on that. So Bill, do you, and Doug, do you want to do the constructed wetland thing now?
You ready for that, huh Lauren? Are you okay?
Ready? Let's go to item seven B.
No, it's nothing but emails.
I don't think, oh, okay.
It's back on all business.
Oh, right here.
In the last few weeks, I've learned an awful lot about wetlands and their definitions and how the EPA and others do them and how they've been used and where is their engineering, available staff, and so forth. So what it ends up with is you want to stay away from natural wetlands, even EPA tells you this in their guide. So the idea I had originally of just using Magalia reservoir or part of it as a wetland would be a natural wetland. So that one is gone. The other one was constructed wetlands, and that's the definition EPA uses in all the writing and everything. At one time, that was called engineering wetlands. Now they call it constructed. And there's all sorts of these constructed wetlands. You can look up Wikipedia, the free encyclopedia, and they give a very good overall definition and picture of them. But what we're, have, we came up with, basically, and I've given out handouts for you, you'll see that there's funding involved, there's different examples of people. And so we're proposing a constructed wetland that would go through the EPA thing the simplest. We're proposing, if we can figure it out, and this is where we need this engineer, it might be a closed one. And Doug can talk about that, because he's really, I think that's one of the key things to this. We talked, we've talked back and forth, but maybe you can explain to them the way we were talking about maybe putting it back into the pipeline and what have you.
So closed, I, I want to ask, with the closed meaning you don't need an MPDES permit that would go back into the treatment plant?
Yes. That's, that's the idea behind it. When we got educated, what, and, and some of it was today, talking to Jim on the phone. We got more and more educated as individuals about MPDA permit. I had a friend who told me, you got to hone in on that thing and make sure you, okay. So we came up with an idea and discussing it. We don't know if it, anyway, it's an idea and Doug's done. He's had experience with these wetlands and he, he, he's going to share with us what he want, he, his idea.
The experience I've had with wetlands is basically constructed ones and engineered ones. And it all has to do with effluent out of sewer plants. Never of this particular type. And I've looked at several of them over the state, like helped design one for down at Butte. And if our population at Buick College had been heavy in the summertime, it would have worked. But it didn't really, would have not done the job with our population being heavy in the wintertime because of the soil types that we had and others. But I've looked at some over the years and I haven't looked at any in the last ten years. But anyway, where that they run through a wetland, we're talking about coming right straight out of a sewer plant that's full of everything that you can think of. It's effluent, but it's been through the sewer plant process and grinding and all that stuff that you see in aeration and that. So there's everything that you can think of and that effluent. And now the state calls what we're doing above the Magalia reservoir, effluent also. You read the plan on it. And I've done, I, I've done that one, I guess it was in oh-four, whatever the thing was written, I can't bring you with me tonight. But they talk about the two ponds that we have and then we dump it back in the Magalia reservoir, which we're doing. That's what nailed us. And it's because we dump it back in Magalia reservoir. We really only got, and Jim's looking at this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, or George, we have. We only really have two items that we have to clean out of that water. One of them is dichloro bromomethane, and I can pronounce it, I'll be doggone like that. And that forms when we add chlorine to the water. And then there's organic carbon and other items in there and it forms that particular material. And I've looked up, in fact, I got that in here, MSDS sheet, which Jim got for me, I appreciate that. And a bunch of other information on this, big stacks, while I've been in my convalescence, I've done a little look at this. And the half-life is pretty short on that material. And it's felt that you could aerate it and remove that. So I don't think there's too much problem getting rid of that dichloro bromide methane, you see. So that leaves us with aluminum. And so what we could do when we look at this, and we would be very foolish when we're looking at it, an eight million dollar plus project, where what we have to take out of it, that we would not look at something like this. And then what we would do, we would figure out how that we could dump it back into the treatment plant. I realize one of the plans that's coming out of the new system on here is the water would all stay on the, off the dam site road and be recirculated around in the, in the treatment plant, in that particular passion, which you would go onto that. Now we can only recycle, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, uh, ten percent. Is that right? About ten percent. Gold, yeah, ten percent. And, uh, so with one of these wetlands and, you know, they are, that we have and this type of thing, I have actually seen them where, that we're talking about coming out of the sewer plant through a pipe, whatever it has to be, is effluent, that's got nitrate, everything that you can think of that comes out of a human sewer plant, okay? And when it gets to the end of the wetlands, fish and wildlife, you can dump it in the creek. And that's what we would have been able to do down at Buick College. But for the wintertime, it wouldn't have worked. And at Buick College, and I haven't done this in quite a number of years, even though I'm still teaching there, I'll, we'll be back when I get okay to get. We would sample, that's Clear Creek, and we would sample the water coming in the upper bridge there off of Clark Road where the sewer property starts. They would sample that and actually the material coming out of our sewer plant was cleaner than Clear Creek was at that particular point. These systems in Paradise, every time Paradise flushes a toilet, it comes down from, not toilets, it comes down through Clear Creek. Don't put that in paper, but that's what it is on here. Well, anyway, now one of the ones that I looked at about fifteen years ago when I was really getting into this, I did some consulting on this stuff, was one over at Arcata. And they'd had things, and it's out there off of one-oh-one. And they'd run it through this engineered or constructed wetland. And they actually take it and dump it in Humboldt Bay. So it comes out pretty clean. And you can see on some of these handouts, your drinking water quality and all of this. And we're not talking about our water that has just two items in it. We're talking about sewage water that has everything in it that you can think of on here. So it's really would be worth looking at on here, to see what we can come up with. And I think we can put a system together where then we could put it back into the treatment plant.
So my instructions for you guys were to either find, Georgia had offered a consultant through Roger Cohen, gosh.
Lee and Ralph.
Thank you, Lee and Ralph. Gosh, drew a blank there for a second. But, but that met with some opposition on there and they were talking about a constructed wetlands. Did we find somebody, and that dollar amount was ten thousand, I believe? If he was going to have a consultant, be it a subcontractor consultant come in?
Okay, the fellow, the fellow I found is Ron, Ronald Kreitz. I even talked to a local consulting firm today and asked him if they had any engineering. They came back and said, oh, we got an engineering staff. And then they called me an hour or two later and said Ronald Kreitz is the guy for you. Now, you have the front page of his bio. His bio has all the different projects that you're involved in. All I gave you was the front page, but if you wanna look at this, you're more than welcome. And here's, see, here starts right off the top with constructed wetlands. And his background is a bachelor of science, civil engineering, Chico State in nineteen sixty-seven. MS degree in sanitary engineer, Stanford nineteen sixty-eight, engineering degree, sanitary engineering, Stanford nineteen seventy. And then it goes on to where he's worked and so forth. But he's done wetlands. One of the things I found out over the phone is that he did the Paradise sewage system at the high school. And he also was involved in the town of Paradise when they were trying to put in a sewage thing as a consultant. So he understands our community and where we live and what's going on. I don't know, I talked to him on the phone just once. I didn't offer him or tell him anything about what we're doing. I just simply asked him about, like methyl, I can't pronounce it, Doug did it, the bromide stuff. And he didn't have a ready answer over the phone. But with all of his experience and so forth, I think he might. He has all sorts of things in here. Now, besides his work, we found at least six cities in California, including Stockton, that have wetlands. The others are over on the coast, Monrovia, they're down in Southern California. Some are quite large and drop their sewage when it gets out of the wetlands, goes directly into rivers in Southern California. Uh, our project is quite small, but the one thing we don't know, have no idea, and this guy would have to give us answers, is that with the, he'd have to sit down with Jim and talk about volumes of water. And then he'd have to figure out how big a wetlands we're talking about. And then whether a pond and whether it could be piped back through our system. All of those things are unknowns. And the location of it. Now, I know George has reason to object to the footprint of the Magalia Reservoir. I have no problem with that, except what I'm finding is if a constructed wetland is put in, that it doesn't interfere with your future plans for the reservoir if you allow for the space. If it was a natural wetlands, yes, the roof could fall in on you and it could actually just interfere with the construction of a dam. So, and, and this guy's had enough experience, he could do it. There may be somebody else out there that has this kind of experience because I just got it on the internet. I didn't, you know, we didn't put out any offering sheets or anything like that.
Well, the guy that, that Roger brought us was experienced in this type of thing, if I'm not mistaken.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, no, it's okay. The guy that Roger brought us, or was proposing to us, didn't bring it to us, was proposing to us, had experience in constructing wetlands.
Lots of them.
For, well, he's done lots of them for the purpose of what we're, for what we're looking at.
See, the next thing as far as, as far as who the engineer is, would be to simply put out an offering. And whoever responds to it thinks, I don't even know if this man, maybe so busy, he might not even be able to be involved in it.
Well, since, my thought is that since Lee and Row do not have a stand in building this, for them to evaluate the engineer, I'm gonna put some credibility in their knowledge of this type of stuff and, too. So.
They can bring multiple options to you, you can pick, if that's, if you think you have the ability to choose someone better than he does.
I, I don't have the ability to choose someone, that's why I would say he would be my engineering person that I would think I would have choose, since we did put him in charge of the project, so.
I would have no problem with him putting together a group of people that he would like to recommend, companies or whatever it is, and their background, and we look at them as a board and see.
I don't see any problem with this guy.
The only thing I wanna stress is this wetland, even though it was Bill's idea, we really need to look at it. Because I, I've watched it clean up some awfully, pardon the expression, crappy water. And we, our water that we're cleaning up is really not that dirty, is it Jim? Raw water, now you may have a disagreement on that, it has two items in it.
Very different.
Yep.
See, I understood that.
Very different from sewage.
I understood that a wetland works great when you have dirty filthy water. But if you've got our water, it may not work. That's what I was thinking.
We just don't have that much to take out of it.
Right, but doesn't, but doesn't that stuff that you take out help grow the wetlands?
The wetlands don't have, it may be that the wetlands can be small because it's only two things. And you're not up against all the stuff that comes out of a sewage plant in the distance. Because some of these things are huge, they're two hundred acres plus.
Right.
They're handling, they're handling.
Water kills the plants instead of fostering them.
Okay, so when George brought Roger here and, and Bill and, and, I'm not picking on you, but you kinda said what you had requested was not for a constructed wetlands, but now as it turns out, we are really looking at it.
The term he used was engineer.
Engineer, but that's just a different name for constructed wetlands.
No, 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 don't, don't do that.
Are they not the same thing?
No, not according to EPA.
So they are two different things?
Oh yes, they were very specific about it, constructed wetlands is what you wanna do. Regardless if you're doing the same thing, they didn't want it called engineered. And natural wetlands is something we don't wanna touch, that's what EPA avoids us.
George kind of alluded to that, that night, that that was not gonna be a touchable item in the first place. So, we, I don't know how we, we do this with asking Roger to basically bring back his offer to the table. Are you opposed to him, the person that he had, we didn't even see who the person was, he said he had a person that could, could do what we needed.
I'm not opposed to a person, be it from Roger or Kreitz or whoever. I just want us to make sure we have several people, hopefully will apply, that have a background similar to Kreitz where they've done wetland work.
So you'd like Roger to put out basically, like, uh.
Well, I'd like the district to put it out.
What?
RFP.
An RFP, exactly, well, I didn't know if I wanted to phrase it just like, oh, that's what I was getting ready to say, but I didn't know if I wanted to say that, but yeah. But you want, for a request for presentation more than proposal, because they don't know what the project is, so.
And if your, if your monetary limit's ten thousand bucks, that's not gonna get you a whole bunch.
No, I know, it's not gonna get by many people. And I, only reason I put ten thousand in it is that's what George had for the other fellow. And I thought, well, maybe, it probably needs to be more money, but I have no idea how much.
Let me speculate a little bit. I think ten thousand dollars, the guy's gonna come and say it's feasible. I, and that would be about it.
Why wouldn't he?
The, the, the problem is in the details. And that's, the details are really what we need to know, you need to know.
Well, the D.
Can, can the water treatment guys operate this? What, what are some of the unforeseen conditions as a result of implementing this?
Does rain affect it?
That should, that should all come in the details that this person is.
Does the DK in the wetlands cause you TTHM problems, which dichloformomethane is one of them, in your drinking water? So you took it out of, you're not giving to the fish, but are you giving it to your people? Those are concerns we have.
But I don't think a ten thousand dollar, you know, ten thousand foot elevation study's gonna give you that little detail. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't know, I just, I'm trying to prepare you for it.
What was Roger proposing for that amount?
That was initial feasibility, just like you said, a ten thousand foot. Is it doable? Is it gonna treat the things you need to treat? And probably a guesstimate on how big it might have to be.
I think if we, if we had that much coming from me, would be a step in the right direction, coming from Roger. And there might be a way that one of the plans that he's coming up with, that it could be incorporated in it. Because you can see it from these different flyers.
I don't think he said who the guy was, Lord knows, it might've been this guy.
It wasn't.
I'm sure that they all.
Okay, you knew who the guy was, okay.
I'm, I'm sure that they know each other, or at least somehow they've been coming.
He's worked with him before.
I don't know how you couldn't know the people in this community, you know, I mean, I mean, people that do construct wetlands have to know each other. It's just inevitable.
Now, let me clearly state, you know, even though I've looked at a lot of these, I haven't looked at any of them before ten years ago, I was always doing it from the seat of the equipment operator, that's how I was looking at them, all right? From building the damn things, and, cause I was very interested in that, that's, that's what I was looking at. How to construct them, because I started doing that when I was sixteen, in drainage wetlands, that's the enterprise part of it, something that fills back in. And, but that's, that's what I was looking at on it, you don't know.
Well, I'm not convinced it's a cheaper alternative. I'm not convinced it's a cheaper alternative.
Well, I would think that this person.
You're thinking in the running process of it, in the overall running?
Money, yes, I, I, my gut tells me it's gonna be in the same ballpark.
It could very well be.
It's not gonna be a lot cheaper or be more expensive, I don't know, but that's just my gut.
So we, like, let's, let me make another statement, since you, you asked me to be an EDP, and I made this statement, you know, before, and I've shared it with, with Jim and others. What I'm looking at is not what happened to our district in nineteen eighty-five with water treatment plants. I, I would, we, we need to build something that will be capable of doing the job as far as we can see in the future, twenty or thirty years from now. Just as a minimum, that's all, that's what I'm interested in.
The thing that comes out of these papers, and you're not gonna have time to read them tonight, but maybe if you read them later, is that in these studies and in actual wetlands constructed and put in, they turned out to, the capital costs were lower and the operation costs were lower as compared to things. And one of them, the special was in Arizona, where it went from a eight hundred and twenty-five million dollar project down to eighty million with wetlands, and they ended up with this good or better water quality at the other end. So I'm going, we don't know a lot, we need to hire a good consulting engineer that has a background in wetlands and pay the piper for what it costs. Because if it can come out even close to what has happened in other places, it could save this district millions of dollars and keep our costs down for managing it. They say basically, most of these things are low cost on maintenance. And they also have benefits of wildlife habitat and recreation and so forth. There's federal funding programs exist, one of the sheets, EPA sheets, I photocopied, had that. And then Jim asked me about, well, the water's gonna flow through it. And the first thing on this page, Jim, is a picture of a constructed wetland. And it shows impermeable layer underneath it, so the water will not seep, no seepage out of it. So that's why it's really important to say constructed treatment wetlands. This is the language that EPA uses and everything else I could find, even the engineers use in describing themselves and their business is that title. And so it's, like so many businesses, if you use the right language, everybody understands each other. And I really don't know what, it said action may be taken. As far as I'm concerned, at this point, somebody else can suggest what action could be taken on it. You could table it, do whatever you want. I wanted to make sure you understood what a wetlands are and what the possibilities are. And hopefully, we can find some money to hire a consultant.
Clock's ticking on it, I don't mean tonight's clock, I mean the clock's ticking on this overall project, so we don't have a whole lot of time to play. If we asked Roger if he was available to come back next month, if it was the board's pleasure, to see if he, how many different consultants he could maybe round up that would be a 10,000 dollar fee, basically, to give us a study on this feasibility. Do we get one, do we get zero, do we get Bill's guy, that Ronald Kreitz, which I gotta assume knows, the other guy that, that Roger was going to recommend in there. I, I think that whoever Roger was gonna recommend probably had a good bearing on whether or not this is something that can happen or not happen related to our particular situation.
Could we just eat, let them, the engineering firms, like we do on other projects, give us a bid on what they think it would cost? As the different ones, and not put a limit on it?
To, you mean to give us a referral?
Yeah, well Dustin pointed out, we have no idea what this might cost. So if we had the firms say.
Would that be Roger, we have request other engineering firms to, cause he was subcontracting that out, it wasn't somebody in his.
Right, he's subcontracting it out.
Okay, so do we just take it over in, in, in that aspect of it and say we want, put an RFP out for that, or?
I can't recommend that, because.
I know you can't recommend it, I'm asking.
What's gonna happen is you're duplicating lots of staff efforts. So all the work that Jim and all of his people and Neil and myself have done with Roger, explaining the plant, explaining how it works, explaining the flows, providing all the information, et cetera, will have to be duplicated if you bring someone onboard outside of Roger's purview.
Okay, so we would ask Roger, if we were gonna ask anybody, this is if it's the board's pleasure to do this, if we were gonna ask anybody, we would ask Roger to bring, to have a, get an RFP of engineers, and so just one.
Well, I think.
Is that what I'm understanding between what Bill's saying and what, I'm trying to put.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
Trying to put everybody's together.
I think that the idea of the ten thousand dollars is, yes, it's a ten thousand foot elevation, but at this point, that's all they're gonna be able to give you.
Yes.
So they're gonna, you're gonna have to spend money for them to come up, evaluate it, look at it, figure out if it's feasible. And then they'll know enough to be able to tell you what the engineering costs associated that, what that would be for a, to, to move on further.
Constructed.
So you think that's gonna go.
Engineering.
Way beyond.
Design it, whatever word you wanna use.
Way beyond the ten thousand dollars.
Oh yeah. I think.
And you think it's gonna cost us ten thousand to hear the guy say that?
To tell you whether it's feasible and know enough to be able to tell you what it would cost to design it.
A very rough estimate.
Right, and I don't think anyone ever could do it for that.
We're paying somebody ten thousand dollars to walk up here and say, yeah, sure it's feasible.
Oh no, he's gonna do more than that.
Well, no, it's sure, that's just for the sure it's feasible. That doesn't mean he gave you any kind of number, sure it's feasible for eight million dollars, sure it's feasible for twenty million dollars.
But some of the big unknowns, you know, I presented two locations on PRPD property. And Director Kellogg didn't like those spots. What spots are we gonna tell this person is available to construct or whatever of wetlands?
The problem here is that you, the spots you suggested weren't feasible. They're not to be even considered at all, because you'd had pumping charges up the hill and all sorts of things. The idea we have is to drop the water out of those ponds into a wetland, right on the side of the reservoir, if possible. It's been done. And treat it there, that would keep the constructions cost down, that'd keep pumping charges down. The pipeline is there. If you're going to, if we, if we can feasibly drop the water into the pipeline, we can do that. And we know this from ag experience. And the problem that I see is, part of it is just, you know, you think it's a waste of time to even look into it. And yet, we have these reports, the one in Arcata, eventually, the first major one in the state, won national prizes and so forth from the federal government, they've been used as an example. We have examples of wetlands, constructed wetlands all over the state that are successfully working. So I don't.
I don't think we're gonna drop it out of those ponds, anywhere below between there and the reservoir.
I did not say it wouldn't work, I said it could work, and I gave two locations that I thought it could work. I can't tell you that it's unfeasible because of pumping costs, I have no idea. But if you wanna give me direction to hire, you know, to have Roger bring somebody to evaluate gravity solution ponds, if that satisfies the, what you're looking for, then I'll give him that direction. And that.
Can I write the directions on what it is? This doesn't sound like you're.
You ask Ben.
Yeah, I know, but you're not being anyway called cooperative in this.
Well, he just said he could get Roger to do it, so I think he's being cooperative. I don't think George thinks it's a feasible idea that's gonna work in our particular situation.
I, I realize that.
Gravity, correct.
That gravity, I think George thinks.
I told you with, in my presentation.
So I do kinda respect.
Yes, I think it's feasible. I think if you used those. Yes, I think it's feasible. I think if you used those two PRPD locations, you could construct a wetland and make it work.
At a, at a, at a quite a cost and so forth.
Would we be able to, either one of those locations, you pump it up to them, but then you run it out of it, you know, we can build the hill the way you want to. Would we be able to gravity it back into, say, the Begalia bypass and run it back to the sewer plant, treatment plant?
Yeah, that was one of the options.
Yeah. See, that would work. What I was saying.
The dollar numbers I gave you suggested it could be cheaper.
Okay. If I, uh, one of, one of them I looked at is all here against sewer. What they did was they, they ran it down through the wetland. And we're talking sewer water now, okay? And then when they get down to this collection thing, and it's almost this way of Arcata, when it goes into a lake. And from there, they have the option of pumping it back to the sewer plant or into Humboldt Bay. And generally, they pump it into Humboldt Bay on here. And it's got awards, you know? And there's one down in the Central Valley that they actually pump it over the hill and people water ski on it. And, and, you know, and they actually pump it over a hill, once it gets to the top that it runs down. But, uh, you had a ten thousand dollar fee figure. Was, was that was working with Roger?
Yes.
Okay.
And he invited the data, which means we're not starting somebody off from ground zero.
Hold on, we don't wanna reinvent the wheel.
So that's why this guy that Roger was presenting was actually, I thought, a viable source.
Well, I don't think.
He would have access to all Roger's information, which would then help him.
Well, I, I don't think.
A better qualified decision.
I think Roger, I, I feel comfortable, Doug, because I think I moved the, the hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that, that we're paying him now. I don't wanna talk about that when we get to the bills. But, uh, but I'm sure that Roger would bring a competent person on. I mean, he, he'd have no reason not to bring a competent person.
I totally believe so.
And the experience, yeah, you know.
Because he is not the builder of the project.
Yeah, but see, Bill said because it would knock out the other project, he might not be, what do you call it? Objective.
Well, he'd be, that's not good for future business down the road. That's not like how you build your businesses. Let me, I, you know, I, I told him it wasn't in their best interest to build a two million dollar project, because it didn't put five dollars in my pocket. So I said to build the eight million dollar project, and then, you know, I made a lot more money. Well, that's not really good for your name down the road. That's, to put money in your project, in your pot of blood.
We're talking ten thousand dollars for Roger, whoever you would bring on, or this other person that Bill found, for the feasibility of it, all of the other stuff, okay? You can get a lot of ten thousand dollar thing from an engineer. We, we gave, we, we have a participating twenty thousand, please roll, hundred and thirteen thousand, right? And all he's developing with Jim and Neil and Bill and you is the concept, right? There's five or six, seven dollars, I've been told, to make that work. And that's all he's doing, is the concept.
Yes.
Now, okay, and let's say it's gonna be an eight million dollar project, any one of the concepts. How much of the working plan is it gonna cost us for that eight million dollar project?
Depends.
Plus a hundred.
Really depends on which one we pick.
Yeah, okay. Say, the, it, it, just pick one out of the air.
I thought he gave that in his presentation, so I, I just.
No, he didn't. Well, he did you guys maybe. He didn't when he was here with us.
A general rule, you're looking at probably.
Ten percent?
That'd be the high end.
Well, that was something I used to do, for the state, the architect, of course, they had a scheme. They got ten percent of the cost, you know, so.
I'm, I'm gonna guess that most of these alternatives would be closer to five percent.
Five percent, so.
That's just my.
Would be talking.
Four hundred grand.
Three hundred, four hundred grand.
Three hundred, four hundred grand, okay. Probably, uh, who's an eight million dollar project?
Okay, so to move this along, because the clock is still ticking on this project, and we're not going forward, so do I have a motion from anybody that is going to ask Roger to bring in his, like we rejected last month, bring in his consultant or sub or whatever it is? We're not gonna put out an RFP to get multiple consultants, because we want the guy that's gonna have access to all the information, I think.
You can make a motion to have Roger bring multiple, um, consultants that he can find to you for approval. You can pick the ones, ones that he's willing to work with.
Multiple consultants.
That's the pleasure of the board.
Or you could authorize the work, not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and see what it gets you. I mean, I, you guys.
Cause he already brought us one for ten thousand.
Right. You could, you could say, we'll authorize that expenditure.
Okay.
I'm not hearing a big consensus.
How did you leave him when we turned it down last time? How did you, did you contact him?
Oh, yeah, I contacted him.
And what did he say?
He was coming up the next day.
Yeah, okay.
The Friday, yeah.
What did he say? Did he get upset or anything?
No, uh-uh.
So you think if we just renewed it, it'd be okay?
Yeah, cause he's marching forward. You know, he's got a project to do.
Agenda to be sticking to.
If you want, and he's got a timeline, and so bringing on this alternative, it's not gonna stop him from evaluating what he needs to evaluate.
Well, I'm sure the person, if, if I, he would be, Roger wouldn't bring him up. He wasn't experienced and competent and had experience doing it.
And the guy has had experience in doing it, we're asking.
Are you satisfied with that? He, he looked up this other guy.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I didn't tell this other guy anything, except we're investigating. I, I, no, if, what George suggested with, uh, um.
Engineer.
Roger, Roger, that for the created waters, yeah, wetlands, that you, he'd bring several engineers. Or one or, that means more than two, I guess, or one or two.
He had one.
I know he had one, but.
He had one, he was offering.
He hadn't contacted them yet.
This way Roger would not be inventing the wheel.
No, he wouldn't. The choice then would be the board's choice. It wouldn't be Roger's choice as such. He could recommend two people. That gets rid of my wor, my concern about conflict of interest.
Let's see if, let's, then let's have a motion, somebody quickly. Let's, uh, have a motion to have Roger bring in multiple engineering consultants on this issue if they are available. Cause first you gotta get somebody to bite for the ten thousand dollars here.
Just move that, sorry.
So moved.
Okay, cause you're dangling a carrot out there. It doesn't necessarily mean there's somebody to chomp on it. It just means that we're dangling it.
When is Roger's next timeline? That, has he got something that he's gonna deliver to us?
Yeah, we're likely to have a special meeting, hopefully before our next regular meeting.
See, I'm, I'm concerned about that motion that you're considering, because you're talking, okay, next month, we're gonna have guys come in and then the board then chooses which, presumably which one they, you wanna have a look at this possibility. And then they're gonna want thirty to sixty days at least to then, you know, formulate therapy.
Just keep dragging the timeframe out. That's what I mean. Every minute, every minute we sit here, we're just dragging the timeframe out.
My point. And you've got Roger gonna give you some kind of deliverable that you're gonna presumably need to decide on.
Well, we have a small problem if we're talking about the kind of savings, if that's possible, to find out about. Um, we can, because we're working on it, move the date forward, I've been told, to have extensions on it before the two thousand and fifteen. Other words, if we continue to work on it as we're doing now and do things, the, we can get extensions from the Central Valley Water Control Board.
I wouldn't rely on their benevolence.
I think, and I think we're gonna pass those deadlines anyway, just at the, where we're at right now. It's two thousand and thirteen. It sounds like plenty of time. Well, I think we're passing those up already.
Correct me if I'm, if I'm right or wrong, but we moved that eight million dollars into the fourteen, fifteen budget. And we're not, I'm not going to commit anything that we haven't figured out how to, how to pay for it. I mean, it'll be one no vote, okay? And I, I won't, I won't approve anything that we haven't figured out how to pay for it, which means that we're gonna have to go to Prop two eighteen. Let's say it's eight million bucks. Rate increase, grants, whatever it is, you know? And because we looked at the budget, and if we do that, we're basically gonna wind up with fifty thousand dollars left over or something like that. So one big pipe leak and we're.
But once again, this is a have to do thing. This is not a, are we picking projects we wanna do? This is a have to do thing.
Let me tell you, I, I completely support authorizing ten thousand dollars to Roger to bring on a consultant and do an initial evaluation. Only for the purpose of, it's out there, and now we will have a document that we can reference in the secret process. Here's an alternative.
Yes, that's, that's good thinking.
So let me offer a suggestion. Authorize George to expend the ten thousand dollars on condition that he finds the sub consultant satisfactorily qualified, you know, with qualifications that are equivalent to this gentleman's qualifications. Would that satisfy everybody's concerns? That, that kind of addresses your concern that time is of the essence.
And I want somebody that's qualified, who's done it.
Right, right.
Because clean up sewage water, and I'm not saying that's not, but that's not the same water we're talking about here. So I'm not exactly convinced either that clean up sewage water with heavy solids and so forth, that is our drinking water, which is, I mean, basically, we have a, something that's a little dirtier than normal drinking water. And now pulling that stuff out.
Oh, and I wanna make sure that what comes out the other end.
Has to be.
If you wanna recycle it.
Has to be.
It's not gonna impact our drinking water, because that's my number one.
Well, you see, one, one of the things also, some of the research that I've done, uh, this, I'm learning more every day, it's quite interesting. This dioclo bromide, bromide, methane, I got it on Jim. If, if we put that back into the bypass pipe, if we bring it in, well, then hopefully there would be none of it in there. But when they chlorate it up there, we could actually create more, if there was organic matter and all that. That would be one of the things, see, this engineer'd have to look at.
Right.
See, so there's some, there's other ramifications.
Adding organic component back to it.
Chloro bromide methane.
We might be magnifying the problem now.
Could be, but we most likely won't be, but we don't know what else to look at.
Well, see, that's, that's the, the question I asked Kreitz on the phone. He couldn't answer me. And so one of the first things we have to find out is just that. Can a wetland clean up this, the chemicals, aluminum and.
We have.
Bromide that we have efficiently, and in what size wetland could do that, and.
And for a long term.
It's a long-term created wetland. These things have been in operation now. The one over in Arcata's coming into thirty years.
Thirty years. I looked at it, it was ten years old.
Yeah, and the other ones in the valley are approaching twenty years or more. So the, this is not untried experimental.
I don't think there's anything wrong with, I don't think there's anything wrong with this area idea. What I think is we need to have an engineer tell us, can we put it here? Because it doesn't matter what they do in the valley or any other place in the world. If we can't stick it here, it doesn't really matter. Because this is what we have, this is where we.
No, no, I understand.
We have to put it somewhere in this general vicinity.
But getting back to one or two of the spots George was talking about, that we'd have to, whatever it is. Environmentalists love wetlands.
Yeah.
Because its habitat, they just love it. They really do, even if they're sewer.
We wouldn't get our water back.
Yeah, we would. We'd run it down.
On the, at the Bow Hunters Range up there, we wouldn't get the water back, right?
We possibly could. We'll have a lot of losses, but we'll get some.
Yeah, well, okay, let's just say we're not gonna get back a, a good sizable water return, putting it up there at the Kudelink Park.
That's a good assumption.
The other one, the other place that you had, we could maybe get the water if it was suitable water enough to run back in.
You know, as far, as far as grass, I keep going off the, I'm sorry. As far as grass is concerned, environmental groups love wetlands. They just flat love wetlands. They really do. Because of the habitat and the, that they dissolve, they just flat love them.
There isn't much water up in the two areas we're proposing during the middle of summer. So if we had water up there that was like made of wetland, it'd be a different environment.
One of the things I think has to be done is the, the, on the opposite side, on the west side of the reservoir, where I'm very familiar with the land and the botanical gardens and a garden, and it's turned over to Park and Rec District. It is now, for all practical purposes, their property. I don't think we should even consider that side at all. There's a botanical gardens and a lakeside park that's being planned and worked on by the community up there with their support. So we take the west side off, and on the east side, I don't know, I haven't talked to Mike about Kudelink Park or anything else. But, and the one down below, below our ponds should be considered. Those are the two areas I think should be considered.
Well, let's let the engineer decide where, where's a viable spot for it. All I know is it has to go somewhere here and it has to go somewhere here viably. Last for, I'm like, I'm gonna be with like Doug. I'm not gonna sign on if it's not gonna last for more than about thirty years.
Oh, yeah.
It's a five-year solution. It isn't.
Did Laura's motion?
No, it died.
Well, wait a minute, make any deal.
Well, I think, Du, Dustin.
Dustin didn't like it.
Dustin.
Oh, he didn't like it.
Do yours, yeah, that's why we.
Why don't you?
Maybe the motion should tie it to, when Roger comes up? Do it at the same time?
Yeah. Do what?
No, at the same time he's proposing the special meeting you were talking about.
With the special meeting, we also have.
No, let's not confuse those two meetings.
No?
No.
My, well, my suggestion was trying to address Sep's concern that the, the clock is ticking. I mean, if, if the consensus from a majority of the board is, we're likely gonna hire somebody to do some kind of minimal level of analysis feasibility, then why don't you delegate that to George, authorize him to spend ten thousand dollars, and then condition that approval on George finding the sub consultant to be adequately qualified.
And then bring it to the board, I think.
And then you get, you get him working tomorrow or as soon as we can, that sub consultant, and then he can bring the product of his work as soon as he can.
We don't need to see him like we were gonna do it before that.
Right.
Someone say so moved. I'm just waiting for those words.
I think that's a very good motion, but not only you would work with Roger, would you? You would work with Roger.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's gonna go through Roger.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any comment from the public? Lauren?
I thought we were gonna have two. I thought it was Bill's idea to have two, two or more, have Roger get two or more.
Well, the, the point being here is that we don't know that there's going to be two people that wanna sign up for a ten thousand dollar thing. If there's two people want to sign up for it, but we're not gonna just keep raising the dollars, because we can maybe get two with fifty.
How about if we get possible two or more?
Well, that's what, that's what.
I think the, the language of the motion gives George the flexibility to analyze however many consultants Roger presents to him. And then he could select.
Roger's fine with it.
Yeah. I don't think Roger was like, you, you get one and one's all I'm gonna pick. He was like, I found you one with your quick. You, you asked for something and I think it was like less than two weeks later, he had somebody in line. So it wasn't that he spent a whole lot of time looking for it, you know?
Just so we're clarifying for the record, is, is the motion not to exceed ten thousand dollars at least at this stage?
At this stage.
Not to exceed ten thousand dollars at this stage.
And then I don't, George and Kevin would have it figured out, but you know, part of the budget that we approved was to have point two or two hundred thousand dollars out of the capacity fee. So would that, that ten thousand dollars could come out of the capacity fee, I would think, because that's what we're looking at. It's increasing, right?
It'd go into the water recycle project.
Will you guys agree to that? Okay, roll call vote, please, Georgiana.
Director Flesch?
Yes.
Director what?
No.
Director Kellogg?
Yes.
Director Haffner?
Yes.
Brother McCollum?
Yes. Passes, four one. Okay, thank you, folks, on that. I think it's worth looking into, and we need to expedite. We need to move forward as quick as we possibly can on that.
Thank the board and thank George and Dustin for helping us get something done in this direction.
God like to do the same thing.
I don't think the west side should be off limits, though.
Oh, yes.
I think a boat, a wetland.
It's already committed. It's already given to somebody.
He's not all the way down.
When you get halfway down, it's rock.
Here's what I think. Water in a park is a natural. So it's not like gonna be like some kind of eyesore. If it's a wetland.
Yeah.
They're generally pretty. They draw in birds. They have animals that come into them. So I think we, we'll propose it to Mike, and if Mike says that we can make that work over there, then we. Okay, then we call, then we call it good. We're not gonna be the ones that delegate where it goes. We're gonna let an engineer decide.
Why are you talking to Mike? He thinks it's worth looking into. He sees.
Oh, water's park. Park is water. That's, it's a natural hand in hand.
Yeah, okay.
And Mike likes it.
But let's see what, but let's see what happens.
What would fit is on fifteen to twenty percent.
So we're gonna jump to item eight A, customer appeal from Paradise Cemetery District Review and Consider Letter Appeal. I asked earlier if there was anybody here from the cemetery district. I assume still there is not.
I, I, I need to interject myself. I've talked to, to the manager. I've talked to, to the manager, Jack, about this and he asked me to, should he write to the board? And I said, yes, but you understand that I have to abstain because I have a grazing lease with you and you pay the water for the grazing and I pay you. So I have to, have to abstain myself even though I'd like to, to talk about it, so I'm abstaining.
Don't talk about it.
No, I can't, no, so I'm not.
So, uh, Kevin, if you would, or George, if you would, let's go to those bills we were looking at. There was something, I don't know if anybody else noticed it, but as of about May of two thousand and eleven, which we decided was maybe, and we wanted to ask Kevin, is that when we went to monthly billing, May of two thousand and eleven?
No, we were, when did we go to monthly billing?
Twelve?
It was like July of twenty twelve.
That's what I said, it was twelve.
Twenty twelve was our first rate increase, we went to monthly billing after that.
What were we saying?
Earlier.
Yeah, it's.
Because we went to monthly billing after the board adopted the Prop two eighteen.
Well, maybe we went May of two thousand and twelve, but that's not two thousand and eleven. What, what my, what my point was, if you look in their bill.
So we did go monthly billing.
You go up to now the first, is this the first bill? Is this the first?
Yeah.
Parcel, okay, so this parcel doesn't really apply because for some reason, they seem to be able to pay this bill.
Yeah.
So go to the second parcel, this one, go to the next page. If you look, we've got a, a balance, we've got an amount and a zero, and an amount and a zero. And it goes all that way up until you get to May of two thousand and eleven. And all of a sudden there, something happens in their paying cycle where they no longer pay their bills. Now, at some point, they, it seems like they constantly have a running, am I missing this? And if you look at the third parcel, the exact same thing happens there, May of two thousand and eleven, they pay their bills right on time and somewhere along there. Now, it's been expressed to me that, that the.
We did go to monthly billing during that time.
Yeah, because you can see that it goes June. So that.
Monthly is when they got messed up.
Okay, so.
Timeline didn't change.
What we're basically doing is saying it's okay to not pay attention to your bills and you tell me, you guys tell me I'm way off base. The way I take it is it's not, it's okay.
Let me.
The idea said we're going to go to monthly billing, everybody's had ample notice of it, everybody seems to be okay in paying their bills at, having fifty days to pay from your.
Read date.
From your read date. But yet, and they went fine for two years until all of a sudden.
But the thing, but I want you to look at that though, is that there was no penalties associated with those balances because there was no penalty assessed.
I looked at that, yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying, in two years, everything was fine. Now, all of a sudden, and from what I understand, their policies of not signing checks until the board has gone over them has been in place for a while, longer than this timeframe is. So now, all of a sudden, after two years, they seem to be having a problem doing it.
That's correct.
I propose that they have plenty of time to evaluate their checks and pay their bills because this one account seems to be done just fine.
Right.
Right up to today's date. We have a bill, we have a zero, we have a bill, we have a zero, and that's good. But after May two thousand and eleven on their two largest accounts, those seem to be a problem. And I don't think it's because the, they read that the board meets and then they sign off on checks. Because you, fifty days, you've met and you could have signed off on checks and there seems to be a constant habit of current balance.
They may have gone, decided to pay it every two months. And that could give you a penalty.
That's one of their decisions, that's not our decision.
But that's not giving them a penalty though, so they can run a balance.
One time it did me a penalty.
Okay, but, but that's what I'm trying to say is they can, they can run a balance and even when you're seeing those balances, they're not getting penalties until.
Because they're not, they, they had a four, I think we found a four dollar one, we found a seventeen dollar one. Or no, a buck seventy one, which was like a seventeen dollar bill. We found a four dollar one, which was like on a forty one or forty two dollar bill. So this time, this hit them and the reason was they weren't paying attention to, we received a bill and we paid a bill. But yet they skipped a month in between at their board meeting where they decided not to pay attention and look at that. So if we did that as a business, would we be penalized?
Yeah, of course.
If we don't pay our bills in a prompt manner, do we not get to take advantage of discounts?
Correct.
Okay, so sometimes when you.
You're mixing agenda items.
Well, I just, I'm talking about them. So they're not paying is not because we're not giving them ample time to do so. And there's notices that go out, I would assume, at some point in time.
So what, what they would have received, and I'll go back to my thing here, is, let's, let's just say it's July first, their meter's read. By October twentieth, or August twentieth is, is when the account passed due. They would have, we, we really don't assess penalties as a practice until August thirty first. They would have received another bill in this time period that would have said, your account's past due. So they would have been notified that their account's past due without any penalties still associated with that account. And then as of August thirty first, before we bring in the reads for September first, that's really when a penalty would have been assessed at that time.
Right, so theoretically, they should have two monthly meetings.
But if they got a thing that said they have a penalty, they wouldn't have time to pay it the way they pay their bills. They have to submit it exact, as soon as they get it and they haven't been doing it.
But it's not like they don't know the bill exists.
Yeah, the bill would have already existed for one board meeting.
I agree, I was just saying that they, they don't realize that they, they have to pay monthly. If they don't, they're going to get a penalty.
Exactly. It seems like what you said, they decided to pay on a two-month schedule, it bit them this time because their board meeting, their board meeting and their bill date just happened to probably fall at the wrong dates.
I move we reject their proposal.
Second, okay, well, we don't have to worry about Bill, we've got one abstaining, um, roll call vote, please, Georgiana.
Director Flescher?
Follow them in their office, the line.
Yes, I want to reject their vote, that would be your motion, yes.
Director Hattler?
Yes.
So I can't.
Yes.
President Corley?
Yes, passes four with one abstention.
Does that mean to pass five oh, right?
Yeah, how's that work again?
Sure did.
And once again, I want to make it understood, it's not that we don't understand what they're asking for, it's that, once again, making these kind of inceptions.
Could we send them a letter stating that we think if they would pay the bills monthly, they would probably never get them, get a.
If we get to the, uh.
Or is that beyond our preview?
Just pay on time and you won't be penalized.
Right.
Send them that letter.
They'd understand that.
It would be hard to articulate that in a letter and look nice.
Write it on the bottom of their bill.
Common sense.
You pay monthly, you won't get penalized.
Let's get two there.
That would be our motto, our motto.
Fifty was the biggest one, fifty.
Yeah, over the time periods, like seventy bucks. It's a ten percent penalty and sometimes they run a pretty good sized balance.
Mine was only a dollar twelve, so I didn't complain.
What's G?
Nominating you for the B S C I.
Not me, I'm not out, I'm still there.
Okay, so I think a letter going to them would be a good idea, very great idea.
Well, I don't know if they want, I asked if they were capable of doing that, they didn't answer.
Paying on time will save you penalties?
I think it's just hard to write.
That'd be a fine one. Should that be just a courtesy call?
We can give them a courtesy call and tell them the board rejected it.
We.
Yeah, see, the board rejected and they said, if you pay monthly, you probably won't get a penalty.
We'll tell them Larry said that.
Yeah, well, there's definitely a pattern to the pay.
I speak from experience.
Of our PR committee.
One account seems to have.
They'll write something.
Okay, item A G, uh, okay, did we put who we don't like in here? What do we do?
Who's term, I'm trying to find it, where, go to, go to the terms, who's, who's running out? You're there.
What page is it on?
It's Trinka, Brooks and Brook.
It's iPad one sixteen.
Brooks is gone. And, uh, see, Jim Edwards and Steve Oakland. They're both, those are the three that are available, that are being, that aren't, that are running out of term. Can we think of anyone else?
Well, and Trinka, right?
Besides Trinka, that would fill in to the non-enterprise. Who's a non-enterprise person?
It's going to be two vacancies, I'm not impressed, I'm tuned for.
Right, but, but the, Jim and Steve, I think they, they could continue on so we could nominate them. But Fred is gone and Mike is still there, so we could nominate him. Does anyone think of somebody who's, uh?
What, what's wrong with Nan Johnson from the cemetery district?
She, she's already there, she.
She stays there until December.
She's there till December.
She stays there, okay.
She's there till December fourteen.
December fourteen.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Does anyone know anyone from a non-enterprise that would want the job?
No. What are the non-enterprise districts, are there?
Cemetery, uh.
Seems that Park and Rec is, who's the fellow from Park and Rec that's on the?
Mike.
Lake Committee, no, on the Lake Committee.
Was Steve, uh, running or whatever?
He's a nice guy.
He wa, he might not be nice to you, now lady.
He, he's a full-time employee of the county, so he may not be able to.
Yeah, this is met, this is met in the middle of eleven thirty.
I wouldn't want to nominate him without asking.
Exactly, well, that's what they said at the meeting, don't nominate somebody unless you know they want it.
Are we going to re-nominate Mike Trinka?
I think we should.
I think so too.
Do we know whether he wants it, Larry?
No, we don't, we don't know if anybody wants it. But since Steve nominated, uh, George, I think we ought to nominate Steve. I move we nominate Jim Edwards and Steve Unken for enterprise and Mike Trinka for non-enterprise. I don't know who else.
Do we have to nominate somebody?
If we don't, if we don't, then they may not be anybody nominated.
Maybe George for sure.
Why does it fall on our plate to be the one to?
Every board, every, every special district does it. Every special district's nominated.
No, no, I'm saying, he said if we don't, it might not happen.
If we don't, well, because the other ones might not do it too.
Let's see. Let's see.
So we might be guilty of doing the same thing to some other board.
I have to approve whether I nominate.
Do we need a non-enterprise?
We need a, a non, yes.
And the Resource Conservation District is non-enterprise, right?
I don't know.
County Resource Conservation District, sure, no, they're appointed.
Non-enterprise?
They're appointed, so it's a non-enterprise.
Back non-enterprise?
Non-enterprise are elected too.
No.
No? Second.
I just think, trying to, I can't remember the board's names, don't have the information.
Well, nobody seconded my motion.
Oh, I'll second your motion.
Okay, who were the names again?
Does anybody think of a, a non-one, you want to do what's his name?
Let's just go with the three.
Kind of, yeah, what's his name from the Butte County Resource Conservation District?
Yeah, go ahead, nominate him.
Well, as soon as I remember his name.
Just make sure you spell what's his name correctly.
What's his name?
Start with a W? And I start with a W or?
What's his name? R C D. Mary, what's Mary's last name? She's president of the board, really nice lady. She might be interested, actually. Damn it, what's her last name? Well, you can look it up at any rate, Mary from the Butte County Resource Conservation District Board, who's the president of the board. And probably in thirty minutes from now, I'll be able to tell you her last name.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Well, it's a phone call tomorrow and she'll find out.
Georgiana can look it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
She can Google it.
Who's our choices? What was, what was the motion for?
So we had Jim Edwards and Steve Unken for enterprise and Mike Trinka for enterprise.
And.
I seconded by.
And Mary, and Mary, what's her name?
What's her name?
Santie Thompson.
Yeah, Mary's, yes, thank you, that's it, Thompson.
Mary Technology, isn't it great?
Her and her husband have a sheep ranch.
Thank you. Okay, I don't know if we did Mary a favor, but with that, but okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What are we voting on? And we have two motions on the floor.
I thought there was just one motion.
No, but he made another one.
Amendment, consider amendment.
Okay, so let's, let's vote on the amendment to add Mary.
Oh, yeah.
Santie. Treat it that way.
Thompson.
Thompson, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both pass five zero.
You know, I posted, I don't know if I'm going to make it, but I'm supposed to go to the Butte County Resource Conservation District Board Meeting tomorrow morning. And any rate, I, it'll be fun sitting there and maybe suggesting somebody.
Suggesting somebody.
Um, there we go. Okay, treasurer's memo, treasurer, treasurer's memo, ten A.
Yeah, we don't get treasurer's reports in.
No.
Memo from him.
Yeah, this one, uh, this one was short.
Your meetings are too early.
Yeah.
In the month.
From the month. And I was, uh, I was doing a lot of, uh, writing at the end of the, right at the deadline, so. Um, yeah, my written report, uh, cash, you can see is currently at four point eight million. Um, not much has changed on any of our cash, uh, projections. Debt service, we're moving right along, financial overview, we're right along with, uh, income and, uh, operational projections. And our highlights for the fiscal year, the core purity obviously see is in progress, water rights application, process recycle project. Our annual audit is scheduled for the end, or the beginning of next month, so I've been gearing up for that. Hopefully, we'll have a presentation in December for you guys for the annual audit. And our state revolving fund applications are in process and we've been working with them to work out the bugs, to make sure that they're going through there smoothly, so. If there's any questions, I can answer them at this point.
Will we have questionnaires from the auditor again for your member?
And please fill them out and return them in a prompt manner.
Where are they?
Yep.
When?
When? When they say.
I didn't get mine in the mail, so last year, so I, this year, notify us.
We, we all.
No, I really didn't, I really.
I'll notify you.
We may not all get them.
One of us got it in the mail.
I got one.
Would you rather receive it by email?
No.
Yes.
Okay, I can probably have her email it to you.
It's because I check my email every day, so.
You don't check your mail.
We'd, we'd rather not receive it at all.
No, my, but my, I never got it by mail, I don't.
I'm sure you wouldn't.
I think you were the only one that got it by mail.
Oh, I got it by mail too.
But you, you just didn't fill it out.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know, threw it over in the pile.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And maybe that's what happened on mine, is I looked at it and said, this doesn't look like anything I normally get or want to get, so just see you later.
The other thing too is that.
I don't think I got it though.
Open enrollment will be coming forward too, so, um.
For insurance?
For insurance, so you guys will be receiving notification of open enrollment, so meet with Christie, make sure you do in a prompt manner again. She's not having to chase you guys down and. and-
We don't have to. If we're not changing, we don't need to meet with you.
No, you still, you still do.
You still do.
You still have forms you need to fill out that state that you're not-
Going to change or P V from this last year.
That you receive the information.
Now, when would be the deadline if you don't think you're gonna get re-elected in fourteen? When would be the deadline to switch to, to advantage?
Um, that would be as of open enrollment of next year.
Losing an election is not, not a, well, you're, you're actually on until December.
Right, yeah, so I could still do it next time.
Friday of December or whatever, and you're, the way insurance works, if you're on the first day, right? If you're on insurance the first day, you're effectively covered the whole month.
Yeah, but what you need to know is for Cobra purposes-
That's what I meant.
You need to be on what plan you would Cobra as of January first this year.
Oh, this year?
Twenty fourteen.
Well, then I'll have to win my election.
You can change it up in the next year.
What board meeting do I have to come to to, uh, find out about the insurance package for this year?
They're gonna mail it to you.
They're gonna, is that what they're gonna do?
They usually mail it.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that board meeting.
You know, was that part of it?
Approval of September checks. Checks if we please. Okay, Director Duncan, I'm gonna start with you.
With me? Okay. Page, what is this, page? One twenty-three. And it's, uh-
It's tiny. That's straight out of the system.
Man's holiday tours.
Yep.
Is that the same as last year?
No.
It seems higher. Is it because of the two buses?
No, it's because he had to contract out to another bus. His bus was already spoken for.
Oh.
The two extra buses he donated for, because he knew that the contracted bus was not gonna go all the way to the lake.
Oh, okay.
He shouldn't go all the way to the lake, but-
Right. But is that the one he took last time I got stuck? Or was it longer one this time?
It was even longer than his bus.
Right. Okay, page one thirty-
That's what you meant, like, wasn't gonna go to the lake. I'm like, it wasn't gonna go to the lake.
One twenty-four.
Got to the lake and like, okay, hop out.
One thirty-four?
Yeah. To, uh, who is it?
Four, one thirty-four?
I, I don't have a one thirty-four.
Fresno Irrigation District.
Okay, that's, uh, for Christie, our office manager is going down. She's currently there today, uh, for a training session for California Tyler technology users. So it's just California users of our new software.
Oh, new software?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a two-day, two-day training course just for California users.
Okay. Page one twenty, I can't, I need to think there.
I'm gonna send one twenty-four.
Is it just me or does this screen seem really blurry?
It's just you. You need to get your eyes checked.
My, yeah.
What?
Small print?
The small print?
I'm gonna need glasses, it's coming, closer in close.
What's your next question?
One twenty-six, uh, what is it?
Screen looks blurry.
Who's the vendor? Gosh. Oh, there, there was two charges for, uh, postage to, I guess this is the mailing of the bills?
Mm-hmm.
Is, are we gonna, is this, we're gonna get two every month?
Yeah, it's not blurry at all, yeah. You see him? He was like this.
Yeah.
Nope.
You're saying one twenty-six there's postage?
I've been a blur in that one.
I'm not seeing postage on one twenty-six. Give us the vendor name.
It's, uh, in-
Info Source?
Yeah.
Info Send?
Yeah.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
We're gonna get two a month?
Yep.
Okay, the same page, um, boots.
Okay.
Is, um, did, uh, the, I know this is the amount we authorize. Is this paying for all the boot or do they have to pay part of it, too?
Anything over one twenty-five, they pay for. So I'm assuming that there's more than one twenty-five on the boots.
Most of them are more than one twenty-five now?
Yeah, especially if they have, if we're reimbursed, we're, we don't reimburse if they're eighty dollars, we don't reimburse one twenty-five, we reimburse eighty dollars.
Right, but I'm saying-
They sell them for exactly one twenty-five.
But I'm saying, are they exactly one twenty-five or they pay more?
They pay more.
Okay, okay, I figured that, too, but I just wanted to double. In fact, while I was doing it, I thought, gee, I haven't seen boots for a while. And then they were, there they were. Okay. Page one thirty, uh, Town of Paradise.
Can't read that, come on. Relocate water.
That's for the Pearson Road project.
The which road?
The Pearson Road, their construction, new, the new light and all that paving and sidewalks.
Oh, the Pearson, okay. Why did we have to pay them?
They gave a deposit.
They gave a deposit.
Oh.
So we refunded what?
Oh, okay, usually you have it all together. You know, they have the what, the deposit and then the, the reduction or whatever. That's why I didn't, it looked like we were paying them to put in the meters.
Well, it, it probably came because of their relationship with the contractor and so they probably wanted it in two separate-
Two separate ones.
Transactions.
Okay.
Because their contractor had to pay us money or pay for part of them and then the town had to kick in more or less or something along those lines.
Okay, on the same, on the same page, U.S. Bank.
Remind me to ask you about that. I have a question about that later.
There's two checks?
Yeah, we, that was a mistake on our end. We, we, uh, double paid that and we've received the money back.
Oh, you did? They didn't keep it, huh?
They didn't keep it. Because we got two invoices, one was a corrected invoice and so, uh, A.P. paid it twice and so what we did is they returned us the one ninety-nine because we had funds available to be credited to our, our, uh, payment from, uh, leftover funds in the project fund.
Okay, that's all I have.
Director Kellogg, thank you, Larry.
I spent my time working on wetlands.
Wetlands?
He got all wet.
Yeah, I got all wet. So I'm afraid I didn't do anything about the looks this month.
Larry got all mine. Um, Director Hunt?
Yeah, Kevin, I was a little bit worried about that nomenclature, less cash on hand.
Less cash on hand.
The eighty-six thousand dollars you took back out.
Yeah, that did look a little, that's on that, uh, the bank one.
That's, that's what they, uh, that, that's straight off the invoice, that's why.
Less cash.
What is all this weird billing same page there just underneath them for Verizon? I mean, you go back to February, Mar, March, August, it's, it's all upside down and backwards. What happened?
You know, what happened was we got our account compromised through fraud. Someone ordered, even on our account, I think they ordered eleven iPhones or something like that. All of those got, we didn't get charged for that, but what happened was they changed our billing address. We could not get our bill for the last six or seven months because we, they couldn't, it was in the fraud department, they wouldn't release anything. They changed the names on the accounts, so there was no authorization of anybody to even get the bills or to change it, or they wouldn't talk to you. And it was just an absolute nightmare and they, it was almost, they combined our accounts with Parrot, Parrot, uh, Town of Paradise. And they used their account, too, to order some iPhones and, uh, it was, it's been a nightmare, but that's why, because we haven't paid a Verizon bill in the last six months. They'll never shut us off, though.
Kudos to them, they save public agency, we can't, we're not gonna shut you off.
Even though we didn't pay our bill for six months.